So to protect our constituents, city officials and city staff. The city reminds all those in attendance that physical distancing and face coverings are required. More on that a little later. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. The city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website and on YouTube. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Landry?
President.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
President.
Mayor Resnikoff.
Here, thank you very much. We're going to ask everybody to join us in the pledge. I'm going to invite Ann Hersey, please, to come up and lead us in the pledge. And I'll just mention Ann's a board member and disaster services volunteer of the Northern California Coastal Region for the American Red Cross of Silicon Valley. And while you're here will be apparent in a minute or two. So please lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Ann. Stay where you are, please. And I should mention, I should have mentioned too, that a long-term member of the Civic Improvement Commission for at least, at least two terms, right? So, thank you for that. So, we move to special presentations and proclamations. And there's a proclamation declaring the month of March 20, 2022 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Campbell. And just a couple, I'll throw a couple of facts and give you a chance to speak afterwards. So, for people that don't know, every eight minutes, Red Cross heroes make a difference in local neighborhoods across the nation. It's not just blood donations, it's preparing, responding, recovering from disasters and emergencies, donating blood and through financial contributions. The Red Cross mission is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. Ninety percent of the workforce is volunteering, is volunteers. So, they help millions of people, especially during local home fires, wildfires, as well as national hurricanes, and more recently, the COVID pandemic. Here's an amazing stat, 90 cents of every dollar donated is invested in providing humanitarian services to those in need. That's, that's phenomenal for, for any organization. And Red Cross aspires to turn compassion into action by helping people across the country through disasters, by helping communities, individuals, families and youth. And calling our armed service members and their families and in emergencies, as Ann will, will, as an example of trained individuals are nearby, using their skills to save lives. So, I have a proclamation here, but first, please, if you'd like to say a few words and tell us more about it?
Well, I just wanted to let you know that there are more than 30 Campbell citizens who are on our local Red Cross team. And they, they're all volunteers and some for many years, some are new. And, but together, we do good work in the area of just responding to house fires when they happen, or forest fires when they happen, or, or some people work at the blood donation centers. But all, all together, we have a really good, strong team.
Okay. And, and how long have you been with the Red volunteering?
I think it's 16 years now and 55 deployments.
I, you know, from the earliest that you, that I met you, I think is always, it's, there's always been a deployment and sometimes multiple deployments and really quickly, quick times. So, thank you for that. So, I'm going to bring this down to you, but this is basically the proclamation from the mayor of the City of Campbell that proclaims March 2022 as American Red Cross Month. And we encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. So, let me bring this down to you. Present.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure. Any other comments from the? From the council, sure, certainly.
What year did it start, 1880, the Red Cross? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or question? Thank you again, Ann, appreciate it.
Just thank you for, for your service and all the volunteers. Appreciate it, thank you.
And thank you for leading our pledge as well, thank you. So, we're going to move to communications and petitions. We had a closed session, but there's nothing to report out for that. I'm just going to add one, one item. There have been some public requests that we look at lighting the water tower in support of the Ukrainians. It's not on our agenda tonight, so we wrote, can't discuss it. But I wanted to let council weigh in. So, what I was going to say is that absent any, any opinions to the contrary, I'm prepared to sign a resolution, which I can do as mayor when it's not on the agenda, to light the tower as early as tomorrow. We've got to make sure logistically we can get it done. Because we can't discuss it now, if anybody has concerns or, or input to that, please give it to the city manager and I'll check with him and, but otherwise, I'm barring that. As early as tomorrow, as early as possible, we will change the colors for one night to the Ukrainian colors. That's, that's, that's our policy. And I think if we go beyond that, we would need multiple resolutions or we'd need to agendize it. But we'll start with that. It's always been for recognition for one night. So, that's the plan. And please, tonight, if you have any issues or concerns or whatever, let's see manager know and he'll, he'll tell me. But that is the plan. I thank the public members for, for bringing that to our attention. We move to oral requests. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public that wish to speak?
None of the oral requests or online.
I'm sorry, I, nothing?
Nothing under oral request.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. We will move to council announcements. Give me a second here. So, City Hall is once again open to the public for in-person services Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. As you know, masks have been required. That policy in the county changes tomorrow. And that change will follow the county rules, which essentially are based on vaccination status of individuals. So, if individuals non-vaccinated are asked to wear masks. For your convenience, we continue with online services such as permits, business license applications and virtual appointments. Visit the city's website at campbellca.gov to view information for all of, to the City of Campbell departments and services that are available online. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. To find out more about this committee or to apply, please contact the city clerk's office at 408-866-2117, or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. The application deadline is Friday, April 8th at 5:00 p.m. The AARP Tax Aid Program will provide income tax assistance through April 15th at the Campbell Community Center. Clients can drop off and pick up their documents by appointment. Income tax assistance is offered to Campbell residents, adults 18 and older. For more information, please visit campbellca.gov. And lastly, high school students are invited to share their stories and solutions to climate change and win scholarship prizes. $20,000 in scholarships are available through the Empower Silicon Valley Youth Short Film Competition. Learn more and register at svcleanenergy.org. So, now we'll move on to the consent calendar, which is items 2 through 7. Would any members of the council staff or the public wish to remove an item? Seeing none? Is there a motion for consent?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Landry, second by Vice Mayor Bybee. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye. Can I make one comment? I think there was a desk item on.
Include, seven has a desk item, correct? And that's okay on the second, okay?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye. So, those passed, thank you for clarifying that, Vice Mayor. We move to public hearings and introductions of ordinances. This is, this issue is actually a time certain at 7:45. So, I believe we have to pause for, what, three, four minutes till we hit 7:45, so the public can be here. And this is item eight, so. Let's take, madam clerk, we'll take a brief break for three, four minutes and then break it up again.
At your discretion, or you can take an item out of order. It's your, it's your discretion.
I, you know what, it's only three minutes or four minutes, and I don't know how long that's going to take, or if that's going to take, take any normal, more than normal times. I'd rather just wait three minutes and let's just hold off and then come back. Okay, thank you for bearing with us. We move to item eight, a public hearing to receive input from the community and consider draft district map submitted for the redistricting of city council district boundaries and for introduction of an ordinance confirming a by-district election process in five council districts and redistricting said district boundaries. Let's see, presenter is our city clerk.
Just a brief introduction before I introduce our consultant. So, the item in your staff report today represents the fourth public hearing to the redistricting process. And council has been heard of, heard of this all the way through September of 2021 through, through this meeting, which represents your fourth and final public hearing. And our consultants, Dr. Tilton with NDC, will review the maps that were submitted. They are the same maps that were submitted at the third public hearing, so there's no additional information for you to consider this evening. And in the packet, you'll see a draft ordinance for council's consideration as well after the conclusion of the discussions and deliberations. So, with that, Dr. Tilton, if you could take the presentation?
Okay, and to clarify, what you said is no, no additional maps were received since our last review?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dusty and council, as you probably know.
Doctor, can you speak up a bit? We could barely hear you.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on here. But thanks, Dusty, for that introduction. And council, Dusty and city manager Brian have been great to work with, again, as I'm sure you're very well, very well aware of. So, as mentioned, this is the fourth public hearing, the required public hearing for the redistricting process. And as was also mentioned, we received no additional map for this particular public hearing to consider tonight. For those who have not witnessed the previous three public hearings, with respect to the rules as it relates to redistricting, we must follow federal laws. It's non-negotiable. Our intention here is to have the five districts, council districts within the city to be of equal population. There can be a variance of, deviation of 10%, but that's, that's as best as we can get in that respect. We want to have no discriminatory practices to respect the Federal Voting Rights Act, and we want no racial gerrymandering along those lines. Then we shift over to California's Fair Map Act, which is the criteria there, and they are in this particular order. So, after we are able to meet the federal laws, we shifted to California and go in this particular order. And for the extent, practical extent possible, we want to have our districts be geographically contiguous. We want to not divide neighborhoods of communities of interest, and we want to have easily identifiable boundaries, and we want our districts to be compact. And when we're looking at these draft maps, again, for those who might be witnessing this for the very first time, draft maps were not just created with a pencil and saying, hey, this looks like a good area to create a district. We have to follow census blocks. And census blocks in many cases are like snowflakes. There, there aren't very many that are alike. And census blocks are made up of populations inside those census blocks. So, so when you're looking at like freeway frontage or railroad tracks and things like that, or areas where there's a park, you'll see different shapes and sizes of census blocks. So, that might be why you'll see certain maps that'll have different shapes and designs with respect to their district. We asked as part of this process, as part of the outreach, and the city clerk has done a great job in this respect of helping define what is your neighborhood and what is your community as, as it relates to communities of interest. We did receive some information back from individuals in a particular district in the, in the city that provided some guidance and information with respect to a draft map that council will see again tonight. So, these are the draft maps. There were five. You have the existing district, and because it was under the 10% threshold, the map that was created using the 2010 census, it can be used as a draft map for your 2020 redistricting. Map 101, 102 and 104 are considered viable maps because they are both population balanced and contiguous. Map 103, also a public submission, was not population balanced. In other words, the deviation was too high, was over 10%. So, looking at the existing districts, and the existing districts were formed in 2019 using 2010 data, census data. The deviation is 7.65%. As you can probably figure out, it pairs no council members because it's the current district plan. Map 101 was created based on input received from the community to, based on my perception that they wanted to create opportunity where there was a community of interest or neighborhood, but they felt was divided. And this is the representation of that particular map. It also has a 7.65% deviation and it pairs no council members. Map 102 has a smaller deviation of 3.53. It pairs two council members in District 1, and this is the case. And because it's a map that you might consider adopting, we put it in the proposed sequencing. In other words, what district would have elections in 2022 and which would have elections in 2024? And then you're looking at map 104 with a deviation of 4.24 and it pairs no council members. So, as part of the public hearing, if individuals want to participate in the community, as it relates to the public hearing, we're considering four maps tonight. You can see them across the top, and there's a little box there that helps you with respect to the deviation and continuity, and if there are council members paired in those particular maps. And before I hand it back over to the mayor, I wish to say congratulations to council on your forthcoming selection. It's great working with both council and staff, again, congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions for staff or the consultant? Please, Councilmember Gibbons?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. One, on the district map proposed 102, we mentioned it last meeting, but District 1 would not have an overlap because there's a termed out council member, so it would not be an overlap, just to be sure. We did mention that last time. And then two is, the discussion you presented didn't cover the one topic that council felt very strongly about, and I didn't know if you had any further information for us. We wanted to make sure that no one was disenfranchised in voting. Some of the maps would not allow someone to vote in 2020 or 22, they'd have to wait till 2024. So, I think all three maps, 101, 102, 103, all ended up having that problem.
Let's have, let's, let's turn it to a question. I mean, very, very, so, so if you could, if you could address that for us, for each map, which maps cause a problem in disenfranchising people who didn't vote in 20 and then would not vote in 22?
Is that a question to me?
Yeah, yes, please.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, doing that analysis is really difficult. You can look at the, the lines from the existing map and to, and look at the lines to, to the proposed map. And I think the council member meant to say map 104 instead of map 103. Map 103 is not one of the options. But the thing that is difficult to really see what voters are going to be deferred and versus accelerated is we don't know if, if they're going to vote. So, that also becomes a situation, nor do we know if they voted in the previous election and they're going to vote this time. So, it's really difficult to pinpoint like a number as it relates to that particular key.
If I, if I can add to that.
Yeah, we'll have some, we're going to have some discussion on this, but.
Just add a little bit more clarity. I think Dr. Tilton's absolutely right. There's no certainty to, to the people in those. But just observing the existing district boundaries that's shown on that left map, and then comparing the three rightmost maps, I don't believe that map 101 has the same issues because it's simply moving from District 2 to District 1. Some of the Edith Morley Park, Campbell Technology Park area. But maps 102 and 104 clearly pick up some of what's existing District 3. So, I think that's a situation that, that you were asking about. I don't think 101 map has that same issue.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions of staff? Because I'm sure we'll have some discussion on that. Let me open the public. Because I'm sure we'll have some discussion on that. Let me open the public hearing then. And clerk, do we have anybody in the public who should speak on item eight?
I don't believe I do at this time.
Okay, so let's bring it back to the council, and then we'll bring it back for discussion. Councilor Gibbons, you want to start? You raised the issue of the, of those maps. You may want to start, start with there.
Certainly. My comment really was trying to understand what the, the maps did in fact reflect. So if, if we are of the common understanding that map one oh two and one oh four, if I'm following what the city manager said, it, we, we as a council have been consistent in our previous meetings that we wanted to make sure that, that the boundaries were not changed that would put someone at risk of not being able to vote in two cycles of election. So my observation is I would not be supportive of either of those two maps.
And, and I, and I agree with that. In fact, and we can, we can have more discussion, but in fact, let me ask, if we go down there, if that's, if that's a consensus, then those two maps are not worth discussing, really. I, I agree, I'll, I'll agree a hundred percent with you.
I agree, I agree.
So, so that, that leaves us with the existing map and one oh one. And we can start again. Councilman Gibbons, any comments yet, or we'll come back, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Landry, I'll just come back.
Yeah, thank you. One oh one was submitted by numerous people in the Campbell Village Neighborhood Association. And what their discussion was about community of interest. And currently for the Camden, I guess that's north, the only park in that neighborhood is Edith Morley. And when you look at the definition of what he showed earlier about the community of interest, to have things within a district, it has felt that from the people in Campbell Village that having Edith Morley be part of their district, it helps them over the next ten years. Although we've made comments right now that even though we're elected within a district, we still represent the city as a whole. But as we move forward, and I'll just use an example of traffic calming, if we have a program and we want to allocate money for traffic calming, does it go one per district or a project per district? Right now, we may be saying, no, it doesn't, but we've got a ten year map in here. And so I'm in support of one oh one because it does address this community of interest and keeping amenities within one district and putting Edith Morley into District One.
Councilmember Lopez? Thank you. It, it's very helpful to have the table just because it makes exactly clear what the deviations are. And so then for me, if we're just considering the existing map versus one oh one, the, the deviation is identical. So I don't necessarily see one as, as having the, the obvious benefit. And, and I appreciate, as, as I said the last time, we had the discussion, all the, the engagement and, and the community submitted maps. I, I'm, I'm just not sure that I see the pressing need for identifying a community of interest in, in the, the way that it's, it's been suggested. Residents from both District One and Two use Edith Morley Park as your residents from all over the city. And I, I, we, we can make a lot of hypotheticals about what, what may happen in, in ten years. I, I do feel very strongly that I want, I want to set the precedent, and, and I, I think most if not all of us do, that we, we represent the city and to, to carry that, that forward. So, you know, for, for all those reasons, I, I would support the, the existing maps. Thank you. I'll, I'll just add one quick thing that, since the last comment, I, I have followed closely other cities' processes. A, a couple of other cities have had these hearings. And I, I think we're lucky to be able to have some of the maps that we do and, and be within the deviation because other cities have had a much more challenging process. So I, I think it's a benefit that, that we can continue to draw on those.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Excuse me. First, I'd like to thank those that have submitted the map for consideration and taking the time to do that. It is appreciated. I concur with Councilmember Lopez in that the deviation is, is the same with the existing map in one oh one. And I, I don't find it a compelling reason to want to change the boundary because of the, of the park. There is a park on, on Union Avenue right now, Stavon, Stavonovich, that those residents, you know, can, can go to, as well as, you know, any other park in the city. It, it is, again, we're, even though we're district, we're, we're, we, we represent everybody in the city. So I, I don't find it a compelling reason, and I would recommend that we stick with the existing map.
Oops. I'll, I'll agree with the last two, two comments. I think the deviation speaks for itself, so thank you for pointing that out. I, I think the problem is a future council can decide how they want to handle districts and all that. But when we worry about which park is in which districts, then the next thing is, you know, who gets, do we get twenty percent of street repair? And do we get twenty, I want twenty percent of the police patrol in my neighborhood and, and things like that. I want lighting to be spent equally. And if we put a million dollars into Campbell Park or John D. Morgan, then a million dollars has to go into Edith Morley. I just think it's a bad precedent. And I don't, and, and we're trying, we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. I think whether we were lucky or good or both, we did a real good job on maps last time, and they stand up to a few thousand more people joining Campbell, which is amazing. And they also keep everybody in, in clean in different districts. I don't see a reason to switch. And I'll support keeping just the existing map and making sure that way what works, works. And we're not disenfranchising anybody. We're not having somebody else vote twice. We just leave it the way it is. So that would be my, my thought. Councilmember Gibbons, should I do later?
I would just like to reinforce those last comments. We have one parks department. We have one collection of parks. We have a goal of having, what is it, a thousand square feet for every ten thousand people, whatever the formula is. All parks are available to the whole community. And I think it's very, very important that we don't begin this full ten year cycle with having people district identify with a particular city asset. We really want to do what has been said. We are, the only reason we're doing districts is because we were forced to. Campbell is a community. And we want to stay a community. And we need to really reinforce that with all of our actions. And I'm hoping that there will be an opportunity to update some of the policies of the council to really make that clear. But I, I'm supportive of leaving them the way they are. I, I don't see any compelling reason.
And I, I would agree, the community, to me, the community of interest right here is Campbell. And what worries me too is, as we have more people, if we need more parks, that land's going to be available, where that land's available, we'll do the best we can, but we, but I hesitate to put money in different areas to buy. So any other comments at all? Is there a motion?
I'll move, I'll read it correctly. I'll move that the city council receive, actually, it doesn't say, it says receive input from the community on the draft maps and submit for the redistricting of the city council district boundaries and select one. So I recommend that the city council take action to keep the boundaries as is for the subsequent series of elections.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Gibbons, second by Councilmember.
Do we have a?
Public comment.
Yeah, yeah, if I may, I believe the motion would be to take first reading of an ordinance confirming the district boundary map.
Okay, I'm happy to correct the motion and say I would recommend that the city council take the action to do the first reading of selection and retaining of the existing boundary map for the subsequent census period.
I'll second. Okay, so, so that motion by Councilmember Gibbons, second by Councilmember Lopez, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnick.
Aye, thank you. That, that passes. And City Clerk, can you read the title?
Reading the full title of the ordinance, it's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell, confirming a bi-district election process in five council districts and redistricting said district boundaries.
Wave second of further reading. I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Gibbons, second by Vice Mayor Bybee. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnick.
Aye, thank you very much. We move to new business, item nine, approval of automated license plate reader camera agreement with Flock Safety and dispensing of bidding requirements as specified in Campbell Municipal Code Section three dot twenty dot oh three oh, section seven. Our presenter is Captain Ian White.
Good evening. It's nice to be here in person after so long. Honorable Mayor and Councilmember. Can, oh, is this better? I was told to project. Does the podium go up?
Nope, on top, on, on top.
Just kidding, I was kidding.
You probably could do it. How many, how many officers does it take?
The one at my desk I have to lift up, you know, so I thought it worked.
Always working out. Please, go ahead.
All right. Our mayor and council members, thank you for your time. I know I've said this before, but I will be brief with this one. Is it, I know has been discussed previously. I didn't keep my promise the last time on that. I'll try. Our recommendation, staff's recommendation this evening is that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a two-year contract with Flock Group, Inc. for the installation, maintenance, and cloud system access of fixed automated license plate reader cameras, authorizing the city manager to execute future amendments to the contract and dispensing with bidding requirements as specified in Campbell Municipal Code Section three point two zero point zero three zero subsection seven. So as I said before, we've had several conversations about this, and that I know the city council authorized funding to procure these cameras at the mid-year budget adjustment. On February seventeenth, we held a community webinar regarding our use of fixed or our planned use of fixed ALPR cameras. During that webinar, we discussed local crime trends. And, and I'm sure as the council is aware, the increase in, unfortunate increase in crime that we've seen throughout the county and not necessarily unique to Campbell, but unfortunately also an increase in crime in Campbell. We talked about the police department's intent and implementation of Flock cameras, how they work, how we're, you know, how we're intent, our intent to protect privacy and be as transparent as possible through our use of Flock's transparency portal and how they've designed their systems to protect people's privacy while still providing a, a public benefit of preventing crime. We talked about the police department's ALPR policy, which is also currently posted on our website, along with every other police department policy. And then we ended the meeting by discussing the many, many success cases that local municipalities have seen through the use of these systems as far as deterring, preventing, and, and resolving and solving crimes at, at the end of the day. So overall, it was a good meeting. We opened it to questions from the public. We didn't really receive any at that time. So both the webinar, again, and, and the police department's policy are available on the police department's website for viewing for the public if they would like to at a later date. So again, trying to be as transparent and straightforward as possible as to what our intended use for these cameras are and how they're going to be implemented. I did discuss the transparency portal a little bit. I'll get into kind of what's included in that. Basically, the transparency portal can be set up by the agency to include a, a, a number of different pieces of information. But, but basically, it will, it will tell the public what agencies we're sharing info with, the total number of plates we've collected over a thirty day period, total number of hot list hits, meaning hits on stolen vehicles, wanted vehicles, missing persons even, and, and a number of other items that come up on those hot lists. And then also the number, and the total number of searches by officers during that time period of our system. So again, just a way to give the public an idea of A, how successful is this program? And B, how it's being used by the police department. So as far as the overall costs in front of you, the fiscal impact is, for the first year, fifty five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, slightly higher than what we had initially estimated. That includes some implementation costs. And then the second year of the contract is the flat fifty thousand dollars. So the, we, the PD does intend to take the additional five thousand, six hundred and fifty out of the existing PD budget. So if there are any questions, hopefully that was more brief than, than my previous report to you guys. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Two quick questions. One is that for the public meeting, I, I'm, am I correct that to the form of a question, am I correct that there were numerous publications on Nextdoor and on the city's Facebook page and other media identifying that the meeting was going to be held available to the public?
So we opted to post it on Nextdoor because the intent of the meeting was to draw feedback from our actual community. Unfortunately, based on the fact that it was a webinar and not an in-person meeting due to our current state of affairs with COVID nineteen, there were concerns about, it was an open, non-registered webinar about bringing other people outside of the Campbell community who, that has sometimes caused disruptions in those types of meetings. So it was really an attempt to focus it on the specific Campbell community. And I will, I'll add that in Nextdoor is actually where we have the most following as well. So that seemed to be the best way to focus the meeting to get actual community feedback.
So you were made the normal, if not more specific efforts to reach the public, but the public response was minimal.
Correct.
Okay, so there was nothing there. Okay. And my second question is my favorite one. Are you absolutely positively sure that you've got all the costs projected and included?
I, I should have suspected this might be a question. Yes, and I think that's the one. And, and I will say, if there's technical questions that come up, John Anderson from Flock is one of the representatives here to answer any technical questions you guys might have. But that's the one nice thing about the way that Flock models their, their camera leasing is that it's a fixed rate. There's obviously the initial installment implementation cost, but each camera comes at a twenty five hundred dollar fixed rate. So the cost is predictable over the two-year contract, and you not, you don't really have to worry about.
So no additional staff time, no additional training time, no additional fit up of the cars, no additional fit up of anything that can interact.
As was discussed before, there may be some interaction with staff on the planning and building side as far as the installation of the cameras, but the installation of the cameras will be done by Flock staff just coordinating with our staff, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. We received some correspondence this afternoon, kind of specifically listing what they would like to see. I, I didn't have the two to compare. You've pretty much covered that all the items listed would be part of this transparency portal.
I think there was specific, I think, and I received an email prior to this meeting.
And that speaker is going to speak.
Yeah, well, I just, because I have questions now, so.
Yeah, so I mean, as far as, as plate reading accuracy, and I think there were some questions regarding searching specific vehicles by color and how that would be used. And, you know, as far as the, the mounting of the cameras, they're going to be mounted in a way to as most accurately collect data as possible and, and in working. And I can maybe ask John to address this question as far as the accuracy rates on plate reads. The, the question that came from the community member was similar to, you know, what's the gold standard on how often are the plate reads right? What's your percentage rate of success on plate reads? And, and I know there's some very, there's some variables there, but maybe you can address that a little bit.
Yeah, definitely.
Could you step to the mic, please?
Members of the council, thank you for allowing me in to come and chat with you for a little bit this evening. I appreciate your time as well. So in terms of the accuracy, it's about ninety eight percent typically with the, the average reads of the devices. But what they will also do is if they have a read that, for whatever reason, the system flags it as a low confidence read, it will actually donate that in the search results. And in terms of a vehicle that would be alerting from a vehicle that might be on a hot list such as. Oh, sure. It's, I'm John Anderson with Flock Safety. Oh, sure. It's, I'm John Anderson with Flock Safety. And so in terms of the accuracy of the read, so if there is something that is flagged as a, as a low confidence read and the, the license plate characters were on a hot list such as like a suspected stolen vehicle or wanted vehicle, if it's a low confidence read, it will actually not alert specifically because it's, the system is designed to eliminate the potential of mistakes as much as possible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez, if you have a, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, just that there were, I apologize, the email had a couple of different questions. So as far as every search into the system has to have a reason provided for the search. And so there are instances where, and with Flock's AI technology, you can search for things like bumper stickers. And obviously there are instances in crimes where we get vehicle descriptions by color, make, model, but the victim doesn't necessarily get a plate. Or what's happening a lot now is that the vehicle's plates are taken off when the crime is being committed. And so Flock also reads vehicles with no plates and picks up characteristics like bike racks, bumper stickers, and through AI technology you can search color, make, model. And, and so again, you know, as, as crime increases and people get more savvy to the technology that's being used to try and prevent, prevent crime, we kind of have to keep pace with that. So those would be the circumstances where we might search a vehicle by color. Those would be the circumstances where we might search a vehicle for a bumper stickers. If that's all we have to go on from a crime lead, that would be a circumstances where, where we might use something like that. So I think that pretty much covers bases on a lot of the questions that we're asking. And I know that the, the individual is probably speaking, has my email. I'd be happy to address that offline as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
I thank you. I have a few questions. Could you speak to, and the memo mentions this briefly, but the criteria for placement of non-mobile camera devices and, you know, will we have transparency about how those sites will be chosen?
Yeah, so a lot of cities, like I, I reference in the report, like Morgan Hill and our neighbors to our west here, Los Gatos, have these cameras. And some agencies have taken the city gate approach where they've basically taken every ingress and egress point in their city and placed the cameras. Obviously Campbell is a, from a, from a transportation standpoint, is a very porous city. So the amount of money, I mean, I, I think it's good, good to put into perspective what we're talking about here too is we're talking about a handful of intersections at most. I mean, these, these twenty nineteen cameras are gonna, we, we might get four to five intersections, maybe more, maybe a few more.
Probably cover some of the main intersection.
Step up, please.
So we're probably going to be covering the main intersections where the most traffic is coming through and into town. But then as with most cities, the majority of the crime is probably coming into Campbell from somewhere else. So one of the focuses is like the captain was saying with the entry points. So in addition to looking at some of the main intersections, we'll probably look at some of the, really the highest traffic and entry points to the city as well.
And I'll just add to that, we, and we have had some strategic meetings in the past with Flock as far as, as intersection points that we would like to cover. But again, you know, to cover the amount of lanes, the number of cameras that are required, we're really not talking about it. You know, so we're really trying to optimize the amount that's being spent to cover the most ingress egress and where we know a lot of the crime is coming in and out of the city as far as the major arteries. And then, and then specifically maybe pick some high crime areas that we think would benefit as far as that were, that are also frankly major arteries as well. So I mean, it's really, that's, that's what we're looking at at this point is optimizing the number of cars coming through to get as many reads and stick with them where we know people are fleeing after they commit crimes based on our experience and, and how we know they're getting to Campbell.
Thank you. And you, you mentioned actually a, a couple of the other agencies using this. Have you spoken with, with them? And if you have, what's been the feedback of their use of the system?
So, so at length and, and actually I, I think we're working a hit and run today with Los Gatos and we're using the Flock system to try and assist with that. I know that a, a couple of weeks ago we were assisting them with the U-Haul. I don't get all the updates on the radio, but we get updated. I, I would say on a very regular basis from Los Gatos on hits that they're getting coming down Winchester, you know, from their city into Campbell notifying us that these wanted vehicles are coming our direction. I think that's the other benefit of being on this system is we'll now get those notifications because we'll be partnered with Los Gatos. So we are, I mean, we are seeing some mutual aid, cost sharing as, as, as far as that goes. And as far as Morgan Hill is concerned, and I would really encourage you guys to watch the webinar because there are specific case examples that are gone over. I, I use some case examples, many of which were Cadillac converter theft solves from Los Gatos recently. And I would say they sent me about a, a page to, a page and a half document covering just November as far as the number of case solves that they had. Morgan Hill, I think in the first week had like twelve stolen vehicle recoveries and that's the same amount they had in the whole year, the, the previous year. So agencies, and, and this is basically standard for every agency that's gone live with this. It typically comes down to not having the manpower to respond to all the hits. So we're really have to figure out how we, how we parse out the work and work with our neighboring agencies as these cars are coming through. I anticipate there's going to be a huge impact.
Thank you. And you, you've touched up upon this a bit and some of your other answers. Could, could you speak to how well balance anonymity and privacy for, you know, regular law-abiding citizens with the, the need to implement some of these devices?
So I'm sorry, can you?
Can you? Balancing just privacy and anonymity for, you know, average residents along with the need to, uh, uh, address these crime issues and, and high crime areas that are going on?
Yeah, well, I, I think the unique thing with this technology is it, it's collecting data that is completely unbiased data and it's notifying us when that data matches a, a series of, of want, a, a, a series of information that indicates it's wanted for a crime or it's involved with a missing person or it's an Amber Alert, which can include child abduction or any of these other things, right? So that the system itself has no biases because it's, it's running off of metrics, right? And, and as I said before, from a privacy standpoint, these searches are cataloged. We have policies around what can and can't be searched for. You know, we can run reports and we'll be running on, on what searches are taking place and are they associated to an investigation? And what's the purpose, right? Obviously, we have just as much concern that people aren't in there like, you know, where, where did my, where did this person that I know, where did their car go today? Like that, that, that obviously is not the purpose of this. And, and I, and so it's obviously something that we guard against with these, these, you know, I guess bumpers for lack of a better term.
And, and as, as you've said, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. There needs to be a reason for every search and then the, those reasons can be publicly accessible or?
So, so, so this, the quantity of searches will be publicly accessible. Obviously, let's say we're working a robbery investigation and I have a suspect vehicle description. That's not something that we necessarily would want the general public to know about an active investigation. But the search field would require an officer to put that case number in or the reason for the search. So that would be something we would be able to audit. The general public would be able to see like, how often is the police department using this? How many hits are they, is the police department getting? So like, what, what is this? You know, what is this? How's the frequency of use? And, and is there success rates coming out of it?
Thank you. And have, have we looked at the, I, I, I see the benefits of some of the, the way this is structured. But we looked at the trade-offs of a purchase versus a, a lease agreement?
Well, I, I, the, the trade-offs really come down to staff manpower, maintenance. These things get old and break frankly. And similar to the direction we're going, as you've seen with a lot of our technology contracts, is there's built-in five-year replacements and, and we don't do any of the maintenance or care of the equipment. We don't, it doesn't require us to have servers onsite to maintain all the data. We get the added benefit of frankly, this is the direction that public safety is going. And every agency and their, I mean, we're not by no means the first on this bus. As I indicated in the council report, we will now be getting hit data off of every agency. And as San Jose and these other agencies who are in the process of adopting this technology, we get the added benefit of knowing we're not paying for their cameras, but we, we are now going to know they're coming our direction and then our cameras will pick them up. And then our in-car ALPR cameras will hopefully direct us in the right location. So you know, it's, it's, it, it is the direction. Flock is the only company doing that right now. And, and, and so that's kind of where we're at, yeah.
Great. That's all my questions for now. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
So I, and I watched the webinar and I thought it was a really concise and informative webinar. And from my, my read of it or understanding of it, that the webinar is now going to be posted on the website. Is that, is that correct? So that if somebody wanted to research the system, they, it's available for them to, the public is available to, to look at that, is that?
So the webinar that, that we presented with the slide deck and everything is available on the website for anybody to watch. And as I said before, I'm available if there are additional questions from the public about it at a later time. And in addition to that, our ALPR policy, which talks about privacy access reasons and stuff is also on there.
Okay. And when, when the cameras are installed at the locations that you identify, are they a permanent install or can they be relocated to another location should needs or dictate that if they would be better, best, better used in, in a different location?
Yes, so they, yes, they can be moved. I would defer to, to John on a, a cost related to, to moving. There probably would be some nominal cost related to moving, but yes, they can be relocated if it appears we're not getting the return on value.
And, and that would be up to the vendor to, to handle that, to, to handle the move if that was necessary or?
Yeah, we do handle the moves. The cost is pretty nominal with that. It's three fifty to move a camera from another location. And in some instances, we may be installing our own pole. That would even include us removing the pole and installing it in a new location. One of just, the whole idea is a block is that we want to make this as easy as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So no, no questions here. So I'm gonna, thank you both. Open the public hearing and stick around because you never know what's gonna come.
All right.
But open the public hearing and I do have a card. We'll go first with the, with the people here, Steve Saunders. Would you like to come up and you get two minutes to speak? And we did get your, we did get your email. So we have that as a desk item. But please, you're welcome to speak.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. In going over this and being obsessive compulsive person, I wanted to offer, if you will, amendment and enhancement, whatever to the thing that's proposed as a, what do you call it, ordinance or resolution, whichever it is. And I'm assuming that you're going to vote for it. So I would like you to add these things in or make sure that these things are covered. Basically to ensure that we have fairness, non-arbitrarity in us, I would really want to know how many cars go through an intersection where cameras are located? How many of those we get a good solid read on? How many we don't, but we still get something? And how many, you know, just fall off the end of the table? In other words, so you know, total number of things and how well it works so we can for our own selves demonstrate the sorts of ratios that were discussed earlier tonight. Um, on the other side of it, we want to make sure that this is used in a way that does not infringe on people's privacy. And as I understand what the captain has said, it's pretty much what I was saying. But basically that we know how many requests are, how many people say, can I do this? How many people are granted that? And whether those are within CPD or some outside agency? That way you kind of know what the, what the demand funnel looks like. And then figure out how many, if you will, hits or returns on that. If someone says, I want to look for a red SUV, boom, they get ten back. Well, that would count ten in that case. Somebody reports a vehicle stolen, it drives through Campbell, we get a hit, boom, that was one. The whole idea is to get from a number of requests, what's coming out? That's it. Thanks.
Okay.
If, if we could get a discussion on how the Amber Alert occurred on this last weekend, how that might be worked in the, in this environment. That'd be neat too.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, any other people from the public wish to speak? Please come up. If you care to give us your name and.
Hello, my name is, oh.
For the mic, either way.
Hi, I'm Ruth Cornell. I'm a resident at Campbell for a while now, homeowner. And my concerns are also, thank, thank you, Mr. Lopez, for bringing up the, the privacy aspects. Just wanted to register kind of an objection on the basis that it may violate privacy. It also may violate First Amendment rights in terms of freedom of movement and Fourth Amendment and with respect to searches. And I know this isn't a, like a search of the car, but in a way it is. Anyway, I just, I just wanted to, to bring that up. And I also had a question about Flock. Is this the same company that does Fast Track? No, different company. I had one other issue. Well, I want to say thank you to the Campbell Police Department for protecting us and being there and not quitting. So I had one other idea. Oh, yes, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about the dispensing with the bidding requirements because that, that is part of Campbell's law. And so why, why would we not? Why would we dispense with bidding requirements? And perhaps that's because Flock is the only one. So either we want Flock or we don't. So those are my questions. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have any other members of the public?
Nothing virtually.
Nothing else? Okay. In that case, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion. Any comments? Councilmember Lopez, you want to start?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to start. I appreciate the commenters, the, the presentation, our, our police department, the representative for, for coming here and answering our questions. Good, good discussion. I, I'll say a, a, a couple of broad things. I, I do like some, like some of our commenters share some of the, the privacy concerns. And, and any, any time that we expand surveillance technology, I think it's something we have to watch out for. Balance with the fact that there are legitimate public safety needs. And so we, we need to balance and, and consider tho, those trade-offs. And, and so, so that's foremost for, for me. I'd, I'd be supportive generally as, as Mr. Saunders said of, of adding some of these, the, these criteria so that when the contract is up, we have good data to determine effectiveness that, that we have transparency. The, the policies that, that were mentioned, I, I think go a, a long way towards addressing a lot of it. But I, I think it'd be helpful for our decision-making process or, or whoever the future council is to really be able to have as much of that as, as possible. And I, I'd be supportive of, of some of the suggestions that, that were brought up, almost be able to do an, an audit of effectiveness, any potential issues at, at the end of, of the process. That said, despite some of those concerns, I'd be o, okay with this, this going forward provided that we, we can assess it at the end of the period. I, I, I would like to see if there'd be interest or openness and potentially looking at a, a one-year lease agreement to, to start with and, and then moving forward if, if we accept to two years, just to be able to address some of those concerns that the community might have assessed at the end of a, a, a year and then move forward. But otherwise certainly see a lot of the, the benefits to the technology and to the leasing model, especially at a time when, when we face some challenges with staff capacity. So I appreciate that. May have more to say, but those are my overarching concerns for now.
Okay. Let, let, let me add, I don't see lights on. So a couple of questions. Are there any of the, any metrics? First of all, I'm supportive of what I see here. Any, any metrics that you would have a particular problem in, in, in doing it? I think some of those, a lot of those may be all you want, you would want to evaluate the system for yourself. Is there anything that's been discussed here today or that maybe Councilmember Lopez? Is there anything that's been discussed here today or that maybe Councilman Lopez just supported? That you couldn't do or doesn't make sense or would take up too much staff time or?
No, I mean, I think, uh, I think once you, you know, maybe have an opportunity and I would, again, I would encourage you guys to watch the webinar. I'd encourage you to even look at Morgan Hill Police Department's website where they have the transparency portal up and you can see the metrics that are available there. And the number of hits every 30 days is on there. I think they would, I, I, I don't want to misquote, but I think the number might've been like 1,500 hits in a 30-day period. I mean, that's an astronomical number in my mind. Um, and I, like I said before, that's really what agencies are seeing. Um, and that's live time data that you can get on a 30-day rolling basis, along with the number of plate reads, along with the number of searches. I think, you know, our intent as an organization and, and we've had these internal discussions was for staff to obviously continue to keep council apprised of, you know, the success cases, which based on every other agency that's gone down this model has seen to, to let you know obviously that there's value behind it. And I think that really the two-year leases is the standard lease for flock. That's the, why we went that direction also because we didn't want to wind up in a, a mid-year situation again to have to come back asking for more. And I think our confidence level with where this is at is because of the number of Bay Area agencies who have adopted this program. And it's not, I, I know I listed county agencies, but it, it regionally, there are so many agencies that have gone down this direction and most of them have only increased the number of cameras from there. And, and then the, I guess the only other point that I'll make is as a police department, we have had ALPR for a very long time. And we've been judicious about the use of ALPR. Um, you know, the Supreme Court has decided these cases. There is no expectation of privacy on the roadway. We also are sensitive to the fact that, I mean, I don't want to feel like I'm being followed around. Um, and, and I get that, um, but we also have to a- again, address some of the crime trends that we're seeing and we feel like, uh, from a staff standpoint, um, this is the best way to really mul- be a force multiplier for the police department and address some of the crime trends we're seeing as best as we can.
Okay, thank you. And I'm hesitant to be honest at this point in defining you must have this metric or not. I'm interested in knowing that you have the metrics to evaluate the system. Uh, one other question, um, it's a fair question from member to public to ask about suspending a bidding requirement. I think at, at least in our staff report, this has to do with leasing versus purchasing. It has to do also with Axon compatibility. Could you address that for the record at least?
Yes. So, uh, to my knowledge at this point, th- that this is the only lease, uh, uh, to use model. I think as I discussed earlier as well, um, we get the added benefit of partnering with our, uh, partner agencies who have already adopted this technology. And again, getting, you know, as, as we share with Los Gatos, anything coming our direction northbound through Los Gatos's cameras and on to Winchester Boulevard and Campbell are gonna, we're going to get those notifications immediately. So we get added benefit of basically force multiplication at no cost to the city. And, um, then again, the, the compatibility with Axon where we can take any of these hits that obviously then become evidence. If we make an arrest, that information can, can automatically slide over into evidence.com, which is our data sharing system with the DA's office. So, um, um, for those reasons and, and, and probably a lot of others, that, that would be the reason to dispense with the bidding process.
Okay, thank you. And my last comment is I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the two-year, two-year exposure assigned to me and we can evaluate in that period of time. Councilwoman Gibbons?
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I'm, I'm supportive of the system, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is I have spent time talking with, uh, c- the community members as well as with the chief. The crime rate, these petty crimes, the car thefts, the, um, stealing of people's work vans, all of this kind of stuff, it's gone up. And, um, we need and have, I think with this system, found something that can be labor minimized effective uh, for the dollars spent. I mean, it's costing us less than a staff person to have, um, this kind of experience. I did wa- attend the presentation that the Los Gatos Police Department made last year at the West Valley Mayors and Managers. And, um, it, it really would open my thinking up, whereas before I wasn't too keen on it. Um, that presentation was helpful, um, to, to me. Uh, I think that the one thing I'm hearing a slight bit differently from the audience, um, is PD is looking at it from what PD can get from it and what PD wants from it, which is all great. But, um, I think the, uh, public was asking, as a citizen, what would I want to know? And the thing, the comment I heard was how many cars go through an intersection? Now, I know Public Works has some data on how many cars go through an intersection. And the question is how many cars get tagged by this system? So that's one metric that's a little different than what PD is looking for. PD's looking for hits for something they've been given to hit on, as opposed to the big picture. So I thi- I think that that's a reasonable piece of data that would benefit the public, at least in the first six months or a year, to know that it's cost-effective. And it has to do with, and the second one, which I think the system does, but may not provide again, the data quite the same way is how many solid readings do you have? If you have a thousand readings, are these 98% effective, I think is what you said?
So accuracy rate, basically.
Yeah. So I think that answered that question for me, but the other was out of a, you know, 10,000 cars going through an intersection, how many hits do you get? Is there any way to periodically provide? Cause it is a way, it's a, it's a, a different way of understanding the data.
Right.
Okay. And it's from the public understanding the effectiveness of the data.
Right.
So that's, that's what I heard, which I would be supportive of trying to help make sure we have something like that for the public.
So I'd defer, but I know that the transparency portal has a total number of plate reads of all the cameras, along with the total number of hits on a rolling 30-day count. I don't know if that's something that we could narrow down by intersection, maybe.
Yeah, I'll, I'll clarify a little bit of that. So there are certain things that are on the transparency portal, which is just the outward facing website that anyone can go to. Uh, but inside the portal, there's a full auditing section that will allow them to run a lot of those reports. And as part of our process, we'll train them on how to do all that. And there's ongoing training if they need it to, to do that. But they'll be able to look at the total number of reads for any time period on any individual camera and the total number of hits on that camera. So they can break it down pretty much however you guys are going to want and then report back on a lot of these findings.
So I think that's what we're getting at is when we get a staff report periodically, we've got some kind of metric to understand how phenomenal the system actually is.
Can I just clarify quickly? I- is that auditing feature available to the public or that's only in, internal? That's all, uh, that part of it is only internal.
Okay. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. Um, as technology keeps moving us forward, right? Um, so it sounds like there's a set list of information on the transparency portal. Is there an ability to add other categories? So one of the comment was, let's do a one-year contract and evaluate it. I'm of this p- uh, perspective of have a two-year contract, but at one year or six months, have an evaluation of what's working. And then it may be we want to add an item to the transparency portal. Is that a, is that doable?
Um, so it really just depends on exactly what you want to have added to it. Um, there are a lot of things that are included with it that are really the most commonly asked for, um, pieces of data. If there is something that was just information you wanted to make public, we're able to do that as long as it doesn't have to query anything that's within the system. We can put that information there. For example, as part of the, uh, the transparency portal, agencies will typically include some of the information on their policies, how they use the solution, how they don't use the solution. Uh, and those are, those are there and just about anything like that can be filled in. However, to pull specific data points out of the system that would require us to code something different, that's not, that's a little bit more complex. But the way that we decide what to build down those lines is by getting feedback from our clients on what they want to see. And when we hear multiple things, um, from our clients, we basically build it. That's actually how the whole transparency portal thing came about in the first place. We just had lots of agencies that were asking for some way to communicate this information. And Piedmont were the ones who kind of pioneered this with us and helped us build it.
So basically you're saying in a year from now, if we, as a city, determine we need more information transparent to the public, there is the ability to add that in your software because you're receiving input from multiple clients. Right? You can, we can add something potentially later if it's determined that we need it on this transparency portal.
Um, I mean, it would be the ta- the type of thing where if it were determined by my company that we wanted to build it into the solution. I mean, we, it, it, it's not something that we can typically just customize certain aspects of it, uh, if it requires data to be pulled out of the system. But if it was just some piece of information that you wanted to make public, that could be put in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
And you mentioned, um, the city of Morgan Hill has a, a portal, information portal. I haven't looked at that, but is it Campbell's intent to do something similar and, and have that information posted on the, on the website? And how often is that going to be updated?
So, uh, the system, it works off of automation. So it's constantly updating. Um, so i- it's basically a, a link to the flock system. And the system itself, as, as the cameras are rolling, it's on a 30-day rolling updated number. So those numbers will remain accurate, uh, throughout the time. And it's our intent to have that link posted. And that page that you will be linked to will have Campbell PD-specific ALPR policies, what agencies we're sharing our information with and a, a number of other pieces of information that would be pertinent for public, uh, purview and, and comfort level, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Can I make one?
Certainly, Councilman Lopez.
Um, my, I, I, one, I, I appreciate the i- ideas and would certainly do, I'm just supportive generally of the, the transparency to the public and being responsive. And, and, um, you know, Councilwoman Landry's i- ideas on ways to do that. So, so certainly I, I'm supportive of that. Um, the other additional comment that I wanted to, to make to follow from one of the questions is that in my research where I've seen some, uh, controversy, not necessarily in our region, but other areas, is when it starts again at a neighborhood level of particular neighbors, we, you know, neighborhoods requesting or not wanting, you're fighting back that kind of thing. Um, and I, I'm, I'm pretty certain both from conversations with staff and the presentation, everything that that's not the case here and we will have criteria. I just want to make sure that as, as we, uh, potentially implement this and, uh, you know, as you've said, other cities that have added to it, that we have clear, transparent, consistent, uh, criteria for implementation. So we don't get into, uh, some of those issues.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a two-year contract with Flock Group Incorporated for the installation, maintenance and cloud system access of fixed automated license plate reader cameras, authorizing the city manager to execute future amendments to the contract and dispensing with the bidding requirements as specified in Campbell Municipal Code, Section 3.20, Point O three O sec- subsection seven. And I think there's a desk item, including the desk item.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So motion by Councilwoman Landry, second by Vice Mayor Bybee. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Hi.
Mayor Resnickoff?
Hi. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your attendance and help here. Appreciate it. We'll move to item 10, which is to discuss new revenue sources. Our presenter is Finance Director, Will Fontaine.
Uh, yes, and, um, uh, hello, uh, 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 council. Um, if you could just give me a second to, uh, share the screen?
Yes, of course.
All right. So, uh, again, uh, hello, uh, 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 council. Um, I'm, uh, uh, here, uh, tonight to, uh, uh, discuss with, uh, a council. Um, any pu- potential, uh, new or hot news, um, that you, that you, that you, that you may want to, uh, place, on the appellate, um, in the, uh, the ball. Um, it's, um, it's to re- re- request, um, that a type of input and, uh, uh, direction of, from the, uh, council. Um, it's, it's, it's also to address a wo- a hard plan, a work plan item in the, uh, current, uh, year, um, to address of both, um, fis- fiscal stability and also re- recovery as well. Um, when we met, um, about a, a week ago on a, uh, uh, Thursday, um, they, um, uh, same, um, uh, topics, uh, uh, came up. Um, our, um, our, 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 our costs in, uh, general, um, if, um, we were to, you know, just con- continue what we'd, what we'd do, uh, today, um, they could continue to, uh, hang crease. Um, and so we, uh, al- although the economy, uh, does continue to re- uh, uh, cover, um, there, there are also certain parts of the economy, um, that continue to re- recover in an un- e- 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 in an uneven way. Um, it's, it's, especially with, uh, hotels, um, with, uh, 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 TOT. Um, al- al- although the cases of, uh, uh, COVID continue to, uh, decrease, um, it's, it's still a, a, a concern. Um, but again, um, if, if we were to continue to just do things the same way um, that we do them, uh, today, um, our, our cost will continue to, uh, to, uh, hang crease. Um, so what, 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 what I'm opposing that the, uh, council can, uh, the council consider and, uh, discuss is a both a way to account for, uh, the, the fact that our cost just to keep things the, uh, uh, same, um, continue to, uh, go up. But also there are, there are, um, a dozen objectives and, um, of things that we, that we know that we need um, to do, uh, today or also down the road, um, that we don't, um, uh, got enough of, enough, enough current funds to, uh, pay for. Um, there are, there are things like, uh, deferred, um, uh, deferred ma- maintenance costs. Um, there, there, there are a certain, uh, pieces of, uh, there are certain pieces of both equipment and, uh, infrastructure, um, that we sh- that we should, uh, 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 purchase. tend to ensure that we're able to pay for the cost to keep things the way that I are, but also to, uh, account for anything extra as well. Um, so, uh, we've, um, putting a couple of potential i- ideas on into the report. Um, I won't go through in, like, say till each of those, um, but, um, uh, council, um, may wish to, uh, uh, choose a one or two or, um, a more, um, there, there, there also, there also may be other ideas that, uh, council would, will have to, uh, discuss. Um, it, it, it's also the option to, uh, not, um, uh, uh, to do, uh, uh, done. it's also the option to, uh, not, um, uh, to do, uh, uh, done as well. Um, so in, uh, terms of, um, some potential ideas that, um, a a council may want to put out for a vote in the fall. Um, there are things like, uh, a T O T. Um, to adjust the, uh, business law, the business law heist uh, uh, factory. Um, and then also to, um, a dr- address, uh, 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 address the short term hurdles. Um, in reg- in reg- in regards, uh, uh, to that. Um, it's, it's a thing that you wouldn't need to take out to a vote. Um, it's a, a thing that the council could just choose to, uh, too. Um, but it wa- it would also, uh, uh, require, um, a change to our a code, um, so, so that, um, they were, um, okayed as well. Um, there's, um, there also could be a, there could be a article test, um, a U E H T, um, a additional, uh, additional, uh, amount. Um, or also, again, um, any other, um, ideas that the, uh, council may have to, uh, uh, to discuss uh, uh, tonight. Um, will they, um, put down what, um, they, they would be expected to earn up, up per year. Um, that the amounts that you see are, um, are really upfront of upfront of, 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 of work amounts. Um, and until we really were to get into the, uh, detail of what we, what we would, uh, uh, take out to a vote. Um, they're still open to a j- adjustment as well. Um, just some, uh, also some things for a council to consider. Uh, and consider, um, anytime that you're, uh, taking, um, a a, uh, a, a tax out to a vote. Um, for if there is any, if there is any interest in the, uh, current year. Um, we would need to object, I'm certain, of paperwork and, um, a certain, um, uh, certain materials, um, over to the, uh, uh, county. Um, there's, there's, there's also a, a cost that they, uh, charge. Um, to, to, to do, um, uh, this, um, uh, to, to do this kind of, uh, effort. Um, I, I would also, uh, recommend, um, that we were to, uh, we were to hire some outside consultants, um, that would help with both the polling and also to, uh, put the, uh, uh, details of the ballot, um, um, uh, the ballot measure, uh, uh, together as well. Um, al- although, um, we, we would, uh, uh, we would, uh, adjust um, that we also get outside help. Um, there also would be, um, um, some, um, a time, um, that we would need to spend in internally as well. Um, de- depending upon what the, uh, council were to, uh, choose. Um, we, we also may need some help, um, to, uh, get a, a special a special ex- special exemption, um, approved, approved by the, uh, state. Um, also, de- dependent upon, um, if, um, a council were to choose one or, or two or more. Um, th- there, there, there are, there are some of them that are a bit, uh, or, uh, complex. Um, that take additional time to put together. Um, but also just the general, uh, 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 the general, uh, uh, outreach, um, that would, that would need to be done. Um, again, um, there's a one idea that the, uh, council could just choose to approve. And also for, for any that we would, for any that the council would want to um, take out for a vote, um, we we, we would, we, we would want to get the biggest bang for the buck if we can. Um, so it's, it's, it's also, it's also good to take into account what you could ex- expect to, uh, take in. Um, but also how us, us able, um, do you expect it to be over a, a time? Um, and if, um, if a council were to choose to, um, go for one or two in the of all, um, I would, uh, ha- I would also, uh, recommend um, that you do a polling for, uh, for, uh, for at least, uh, with these. Um, you, um, you don't need to, uh, put them, uh, two out of vote. Um, but if you do them at the same, uh, time, you're able to judge, uh, you're able to judge at the same, uh, uh, time for a relatively, um, the same a cost. Um, which one, um, hey, which one may be approved uh, through a vote of the, uh, of, of, which one may be approved through a vote of the of, of people? Um, and we're a brewer, we're brewer. We, we are brewer, we are brewer hanging this to a council, uh, tonight. Um, be, because it, um, it does, uh, take a great, uh, feel of both, um, external, but also, but also internal work. Um, so if, if, if there's, if there is, if there is anything that council wishes to pursue. Um, it's a thing that we would need to, uh, it's a thing that we would need to begin, um, and do the, uh, uh, polling, um, over the next, I'd say, one to two, two months. Um, so there are, uh, now, there are a number of steps um, that would need to be, uh, uh, taken. Um, they, 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 they are also contained in the, in the, uh, port. Um, and then it's, it's, it's also a good, um, a time to, uh, uh, talk of, uh, talk about these, uh, potential ideas, um, because we're, we're also putting to, we're also putting together the proposed budget. Um, so it's a good, it's a good, it's a good time in, uh, general. Um, so again, we're, uh, hoping to get a council's input and, uh, and, uh, uh, direction, uh, tonight. Um, there, there also could be, there also could be other ideas that you would want to, uh, discuss. Um, you also could, uh, uh, tell us, um, to not, um, to not do, uh, honey things. And then also if there is any other, uh, direction as well. So I think I've gone on a bit, so I will, uh, return it to, uh, a council and, uh, take of questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Lopez, let me start.
Sure, thank you. Um, so I, I note that for the sales tax, um, if we were to consider that it would require or if we were to pursue that, it would require an exemption from the city legislature. But my question is, would that follow the normal legislative calendar? And in which case, it would presumably be too late to qualify for the November, uh, election. So how does that process work?
Um, so it, um, it, it could, it could also be a part of the upcoming state of, uh, the state of, uh, the state budget process. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a thing though, um, that we would need to confirm. Um, they some types of, um, these types of exemptions from the, uh, state are um, uh, typical, um, but I would want to also couldn't confirm um, that we aren't too, too late as well.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm, I'm not, I think if we were to pursue it, we, it sounds like we would get the approval. Just, I, I do think it's important to confirm the timeline. Um, and, and then, y- y- you know, it's, it's early and, and, and the process, this may come at a, a later stage and, and fair enough if so. I'm just wondering if we've had any discussion, if we have awareness of other agencies, particularly, uh, school districts and, and, you know, and, uh, other neighboring agencies, if they would be pursuing their own measures, um, because I, I think that would impact that the discussion and maybe what, what voters are, are willing um, to consider. And, and I know at least, I think at least one of the school districts will have their own measure.
Um, hey, um, and we've not done yet, uh, we've not yet, uh, hashed out to either the, uh, county or the school, uh, 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 districts. Um, should the, uh, uh, council, uh, wish to pursue, uh, if, should the council wish to pursue anything, anything for the fall, um, we would, um, certainly, uh, uh, confer, uh, with both the, uh, county and the state, um, the, uh, uh, different to, uh, the different, uh, districts, um, to ensure that we don't compete. Um, but I, I think that anytime that you put anything onto the, uh, ballot, um, there will typically be, um, whoa, 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 hundred two, um, uh, a tax, uh, tech measures, um, that are coming from either the uh, county or the state. Um, so, um, we don't got, oh, uh, any control there. Um, but we will, we would, we would certainly, uh, check that as well.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, the, the only other thing um, I'll add is that I, I did request before this, a breakdown of current sales tax, how it's allocated, the percentages. Um, I, I may have missed it somewhere, but it might be helpful as a follow-up or, you know, I, I think it would have helped inform the discussion.
Councilwoman Landry?
Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you, Will, um, and staff, uh, interesting ways to potentially raise money. Um, I'm going to focus in on the short-term rental agreement. Currently, right now, people are listing rentals in Campbell. Is there currently any penalty to be listing? And second part of that question is can, or does Airbnb or et cetera get the penalty or does the actual rental property get the penalty? Because like what I heard in San Francisco, when they first created their program, was that Airbnb could have been the one penalized for listing, because right now you can't have a short-term rental in Campbell, so, but there are people listing. So we're not having any penalty right now, correct?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in initially. Um, I know there have been one or two complaints that I'm aware of that there was some code enforcement action taken. I do not recall that there was actually a penalty imposed in, in those cases. Um, I do not believe it is, uh, that we get a lot of complaints about short-term rentals. But, uh, maybe Rob would, would have, uh, more information about that than I do. But as far as I know, we don't get a lot of complaints. We're a complaint-driven code enforcement operation. Uh, and as I said, the only, I, I only know of one or two that, uh, have at least come across my desk.
Okay, so if it is going to be a penalty, would it be a penalty to Airbnb for listing it? Or would it be a penalty to the homeowner that, that they are renting it out?
Yes, and, uh, the, well, the homeowner would definitely be subject to a penalty. Uh, there may be some question as to whether A and A, um, Airbnb would in fact be subject to a penalty just for listing it, since the crime i- is actually the rental of the property. Not necessarily the advertising or facilitating of that rental.
Hi, Rob.
Hi, good evening. Robbie Street, City Board Director. Under Campbell's ordinances, short-term vacation rentals currently are not allowed. So I want to make that clear. I know the council knows that. Uh, I don't have stats on code enforcement complaints, uh, anecdotally. Uh, as our attorney mentioned, I think that's correct. Uh, if someone complained on a short-term vacation rental, it'd be treated like any other code enforcement issue, it'd be a zoning violation. It would be subject to fees that would progress until it's abated, which means, uh, closing up the short-term vacation rental.
Okay, and, um, I, Rob, you and I had a conversation before about the disclosure of who's filing the complaint. Because I think a perception in the community is that if you complain, my neighbor can retaliate against me. And you've told me that the person complaining will not be identified, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions then? So I have a couple of questions. So I'm a little confused on the numbers here. So when we look at T O T increase up to a million dollars, first of all, that assumes full recovery from COVID. Let's start with that.
I, um, it does, yes. Um, so if it wa- if it were, um, yes.
Well, in the next two years, what's the more realistic number? Hmm, say twenty-three, twenty-four if it passed.
Yeah, um, I would ex- expect about, uh, the, about fifty, uh, percent of that.
So is this, if I, if I'm doing my math right, if two percent adds up another million, we're saying in the best of times gross revenue in hotels in Campbell is fifty million dollars?
No, no, um.
So I'm missing something here. Is that two percent of fifty million, right? Is that ten percent is five million, one percent is five hundred thousand? Two percent is a million.
Um, could, could, could you, could you, um, could you, happy to?
So, so I looked at it and said, if we're getting two, one million dollars incremental for two percent increase in tax. To, how, so I would need fifty million dollars in sales to get one million from two percent of it, right? Am I, am I off?
Correct, um, so.
Incredibly high for.
In the report, um, it, it, it would, it would be to, uh, take the uh, current, the current rate from tw- from tw- from a twelve, twelve percent T of T, T O T, um, to a four, a four, our team, uh, of, of, of a percent. Um, if you were to go up, um, the, the extra two of, of, of percent or, um, to, to, two hundred of, uh, uh, it's a point. Um, it's a, it's a sixteen, it's a, it's a sixteen, a sixteen point six, a six, uh, uh, percent. Adjustment step upward. Um, and of, of, uh, uh, COVID, um, we were earning about the of, of, of COVID, um, we were earning about the four, about a hard point eight, uh, of, about four point eight million of, of per year in, uh, T O T. Um, the, the, the fact, um, I dropped to about one point six, um, uh, occurring, uh, COVID, um, we expected to go up to about two point three to two point uh, uh, before in the current year. Um, we're hopeful that it will continue to, uh, jump up, um, but it's, um, it's, it's typically been around, around the four, uh, uh, around a four point eight million of per year, uh, based on upon a twelve percent, uh, uh, T O T rate.
Okay, I, I guess I have to play with the numbers if we can have a conversation offline. If I do it differently, I say that fourteen, fourteen percent and four point eight million would be about thirty eight million. So two percent more is going to be six, seven hundred thousand at the most. So anyway, I, I guess we could look at revenues. I have the same question in the, um, sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I guess, I guess I gotta play with it. You're, I assume you're then saying if point two five gets us this now, we'll double it. The problem is to get for point two five percent to generate three point two billion billion dollars in sales. It doesn't, I, I missed something in the math.
I mean, I just ran, I just did the calculation, just following that math. So if you increase two percent, you're existing at twelve percent, two percent.
Oh, twelve, okay.
Compared to twelve percent is sixteen point six, 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 six percent increase. So multiply that sixteen point six, six, six percent times four point eight million, you come up with eight hundred thousand, is how that math works.
Yeah, so for, twelve percent, I did fourteen, it was forty million, so two percent to me is like at the most eight hu- eight hundred, which is a number, okay. I get, I, I guess it's close. I mean, I guess that the, and we're getting, we're getting three million plus pre-COVID with the point two five percent. So today, prior, prior to COVID, we were getting.
Correct. Well, I'm William, we got them, we got that amount of premium of COVID, but we also expect to either, to either get the same amount or also over in the current year. Um, it's recovered one hundred percent. Um, and, and, and so the amount that we, that we put down, the amount that we put down in the report, um, it's, um, it's based on upon what we expect to, uh, what we expect to receive today for a point two, uh, uh, two five rate. If we were to, uh, if we were to, to, uh, to, uh, double that, um, then we, then we could easily expect to get two, two, two times of what we get, uh, today.
Does. So I, I know at one point we're getting three million, and that may be a few years ago. Does that take into account in the, in the future projections? We lost the fries, we lost the Bed Bath and Beyond, we've lost restaurants, we've lost. I mean, there's a lot, we've had, we've had some large places, if you go near, near Whole Foods of Performance Bike and, um, and Dress Bar and bigger, bigger places, Office Depot. I mean, is it taking those into account? That because at the peak, we had all those businesses, we had an Ace Hardware, um, offset by a grocery outlet coming in, of course, but it takes that into account?
It does, it does. Um, although, although, although there are companies that, um, uh, uh, go or, uh, uh, close, um, there are also, there are also other companies that are coming. Um, the one, um, the ones, the one thing that's been also really helpful, the one thing that's been really helpful is um, that anytime a person makes an, 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 an online purchase, um, for the past two to three, uh, three, uh, years, um, we've also been able to get additional, uh, uh, taxes, um, that have been uh, collected. Um, it's only been a thing that's, that's been in effect for maybe two years and stuff now. Um, so again, although companies that, uh, uh, go, uh, while you are taking to, uh, uh, come, both the, um, new, uh, companies and, it happens as you come in, but also, um, the, on the online purchases, um, it, it helps to, uh, uh, them, any, uh, takers.
Okay, so the piece I'm missing is Am- Amazon and eBay and Etsy and all these places. Okay, fair enough. I'd like to sit with you on some point, look at numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
They seem stretching me, but I get it. I'm missing a piece of certainly the online e-commerce portion. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, so we'll open up the public, uh, for a couple of comments. Anybody wishing to speak on this item?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Councilmember Lopez?
You, so? Sure. Um, so first of all, I just appreciate that we're having the, these discussions and, um, I, I'm okay with, uh, you know, where we're on the process, starting a little bit broader and, and narrowing it down. So some, some of the information I think, you know, would have been helpful to, to, to have, but I think we'll pin that, pinpoint that and narrow that, that down. Um, I'll try to be fairly brief and then maybe we can see if, if there's consensus and if we need to. Um, I, I can go into the reasons a bit more, but just in the interest of, of being brief, going down the list. Uh, not, not supportive at this time of the T O T increase. Um, I would be open to, to the discussion about short term rental enforcement. Um, it, it really is much tougher for smaller cities compared to San Francisco or San Jose to cut one of these deals, but given, given the fact that it, it has one of the lowest barriers of these options, I think it hurts to consider it. It's not going to be a, a huge amount probably. Um, but, but I'm open to, um, exploring the idea. Um, not supportive at all right now of, uh, uh, business, uh, increasing, uh, those fees and, and taxes. Um, I'm, I'm open to, uh, uh, exploring parcel tax and additional sales tax. Um, with the caveat of, you know, we'd want to figure out, um, the, the legislative issue. Um, can we do it in, in one of the, the budget bills, um, which might push up that timeline or, you know, is this something? And, and, and if it is, you know, not going to be possible by the November election, maybe we, we want to do it next year, um, or, uh, uh, consider it later. So um, I, I, I think those probably, we get the biggest, um, being, uh, for, for our buck. Um, I, and, and we have the parcel tax, specifically the general purpose tax. I'd be nervous about going to a special purpose tax with the, the higher, um, approval requirement. Um, and, and you know, with the caveats as mentioned during questioning that, um, and, and we can't completely control this, but that um, other jurisdictions, what may have their, their own measures, which might be seen to, to compete. I'm maybe open exploring the utility users tax, but, um, I, if we did, I would want to exempt clean energy and uh, given that the fact, um, of, uh, you know, how, and Councilman Givens may know more about this, but with Silicon Valley, clean energy, uh, may not be a lot after, or, or anything after that, that exemption. I'm not totally clear on, um, on how that might work. Um, but I think those are, are worth, um, exploring. I'm, I'm open to further discussion, um, if, if there's any controversy or, or disagreement on those.
Do you have your, Councilmember Givens?
Okay, thank, uh, thank you. Um, I appreciate the report. Um, council's actually talked about all of these items over the last year, year and a half. Um, so, um, I'll give you my thoughts based on that, with what's here. My overall comment is, um, I think we have to be very sensitive to inflation, um, and the cost, increasing the cost of living in our community. So, um, the T O T one, I have been supportive of for a long time for two reasons. One is um, that it's not, the basic philosophy is it's not our residents that pay it. Two is just because you have the ability to go to fourteen percent, which most of our surrounding cities already have. You don't have to, you just simply are getting the public's permission at some point to enact it. So to me, it's pretty easy. I would go to fifteen percent, give us a little cushion, so we don't have to do it again. So I'm supportive of that only because it's a flexibility. And I don't think it's going to take a lot of work with the public to support a T O T that's similar to what's in our neighborhood. Um, short term rental, uh, I've been very supportive of this for a long time, but I have a little bit of a different take on it, um, which is that, uh, it is take, short term rentals take housing out of our community, okay? And to me, I did this research two years ago, pre-COVID, everything's pre-COVID. Um, there were over two hundred, um, short term rentals in Campbell at that time. So, um, none registered, we get no money, they may have complaints, whatever. But mostly, they take those units out of our community, which we desperately need. I was surprised that one of the Airbnb units was in one of the apartment buildings on Bascom. Okay, that we should not, I mean, just, that's bizarre to me, but that's what was going on. Most cities have, short term rentals have terms of six, no more than six months. So there's a real incentive to actually put the units back into the marketplace. So it's a big topic with many, um, pros and cons, but I'm, I'm supportive of it, um, for a second reason, which I haven't said until now, because it's only recently come up in my brain cells, which is, we need money for housing, our housing program. These programs in other cities are, are cost neutral. You have a fee to register. And, um, that covers the staff time, it's pretty straightforward. And then Airbnb, um, or others of the short term rental companies handle all the other paperwork, all the taxes, everything like that. And all of that money can go into our housing program. We just need it. And the housing program is going to be short funded going forward, because we're going to be adding hundreds of units that need to be managed by the city in our B M R U program. So we need the money. So I'm very supportive of going forward on that. The business license tax, I know that this is one of those near and dear to Will's heart. Um, the P D's been much better at, at getting us to go forward with, uh, implementing modern technology and cloud information and everything like that. I think it's a big ask for our community. Though I'm challenged by this. I don't disagree with the need to modernize our taxes. If we can get a, a program that you've been talking about that would let us do this another time around, I, I would be supportive of that. But I'm having, I'd have a hard, hard time, um, doing that right now. Um, and, um, on the next three here, why, what's the need? What would we really use the money for? That's what's missing in several of these discussions. Uh, parcel tax, I'm sorry, I, I can't support a parcel tax. I don't think our community would support a parcel tax. Um, it's a big deal, um, to have a community support a parcel tax. And again, why? What would we use the money for? Okay, um, and the additional sales tax, same question, I have the same legislative question you do. Um, kind of thing, it has been done in one or two cities around here, and it's a big deal to get the permission to go over. Um, so to me, um, I'm not supportive of, of looking at the sales tax. Uh, the utility user tax is another one that Will's brought up numerous times. Um, I don't know enough about utility user taxes. Um, the only thing I can say to your, uh, council member Lopez's question is, and it's in the staff report, you don't want to put an additional tax on a utility that you're trying to transition to. So I think, um, we'd have to look at that very carefully. And again, I don't understand what would justify the users to vote for a tax like this? Um, and, uh, again, how would we use it? So in summary, I would be supportive of the T O T. I question how much, uh, fuss with, um, surveys and things you need to do something like that. I'm not a big fan at all, and, and, and others, we've talked about this before, uh, Mayor Rosnikoff on, um, these polling. What, what, how do you do polling these days that's really viable? Um, so I, I question how we'd even go about the polling aspect of it, but that's down the road. I'm supportive of the T O T, I'm supportive of the short term rental. I'm basically not supportive of anything else.
Hey?
Uh, yes, um, thank you, thank you, Will. Um, so I would support revenue generation that doesn't come from our, uh, city residents. So that would say, that, in that, with that said, a utility tax affects our residents, a parcel tax affects our residents. A business tax affects our businesses. So those are ones that I'm not supportive right now, especially with inflation, and I don't think they'd fare well on a ballot measure right now. I think there's too much going on that's uncertain in our economy. Um, the T O T is not next, not affecting our citizens or our businesses other than the hotels. Um, but like it says in here, most people don't object to it. Um, so I would support a T O T increase, and I would go, uh, like Councilwoman, uh, Given said, to go to fifteen percent. So we don't have to go back to the ballot again anytime soon. And it would be, you know, you could incrementally implement it, but if it's going to go on the ballot, go a little higher percentage wise. The short term rental, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Givens, uh, we've got a housing problem, and when hotels fill up, when our economy recovers, they're going to be in more demand. And I think it's very unfortunate, we're going to force us to have three thousand, three hundred new homes, and we're going to rent them all out as short term rentals. Um, I think it's unfortunate that there's not a lot of enforcement right now, and some of it's complaint basis. Um, so if there is a short term rental enforcement program, we need more enforcement officers or code compliance somehow to enforce this. What, what kind of staff time would that take? And then how does adding staff and staff time offset whatever income we could get? I'd like to know what we could do to prevent them from being listed right now other than a complaint, and I don't know if we can say to Airbnb, you can't list anything in our city boundaries. It, it's a penalty, or just basically don't do it. So I would support, uh, enforcement. I don't think a permanent short term rental program is, um, up for discussion right now because of some of these uncertainties and a complete understanding of what the impact to the community was or is. What kind of short term rentals, is it the woman who needs extra rent and has to rent out a bedroom, or is it the person who is renting out their entire house? I saw something listed where for twenty bucks a night, they had twenty bunk beds in the master bedroom. And where do the cars park? How does that impact the neighborhood? So I think the short term rental program has a lot of, um, things that would need to be resolved, but I do, uh, support enforcement. But I would like to have that offset with what does that do for staff time, because that's an expense. I do not support a parcel tax. We just dinged our people for our bond measure, we're collecting money for those. Um, I don't support these additional sales tax, even though some of this would be people outside the city, a lot of it would impact, and the legislative process to do that is complicated. And I don't support at this time a utility tax. But what I did not see on here is development impact fees. And we've been talking about this, we have speakers that come, I have brought it up. Um, we have a lot of development, not only in our city, but our surrounding cities that are impacting us. And so I would like to see more information or some information about what development impact fees would look like, what we could generate, and what would, what categories would that fall under of development? Um, so I think that's my comments. Um, so I think that's my comments.
Vice Mayor, by me.
Thank you. So I have concerns uh, with the timing of this and going to the ballot and asking voters for increases in taxes, and um, given that we're in an economic recovery, and we need to be sensitive to residents and um, the ability for them to um, survive in this, in this um, COVID pandemic. And so I'm, I'm looking at these as what I see as a potential likelihood that we would be able to pass one of these measures. And the only one that I, I feel that we might have some success at is the T O T increase. And again, to me, it's a timing and um, issue, and I think we need to be sensitive to the hotel industries, industry in itself, because they really did take a hit through the pandemic, and obviously they haven't recovered, so. I, I would, I would be somewhat um, willing to, to explore that. Uh, again, it's a, a tax, it's paid by people that are coming to the, to the city. Um, it's kind of an automatic thing, it's when, whenever you travel, you, you're just expected that there's going to be a T O T fee. So I would support that. Um, I would like to see some additional information on the short-term rental. Um, I, I, the report, you know, estimates a certain amount of income annually, but to me, I, that seems rather high. Um, I don't know enough about the short-term rentals and, and what how many short-term rentals are actually out there? And, and what, what the revenue would be, but I, I think that would be something that we would explore. I'm not supportive of the other measures, I just don't think that they would have a likelihood of, of passing um, on a ballot measure. And the one thing that I, it's not included in the report that I think um, we should be looking at is our, our user fees. I think we need to do a comprehensive uh, fee study to look at what um, the actual amount that, um, that, the cost of our services that we're providing to our residents and the actual cost recovery, and looking at possibly um, reviewing and, and updating our, our cost recovery policy. So I think that's an area that we should be looking at.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, for me, I think, I think timing is the key word. I think this is a good discussion to have. I think the timing is way off. At this point, to, to me, with, with coming out of COVID, hopefully, but we don't really know, there's uncertainty coming, coming on, on the biggest inflation we've seen in years and years. I'm not willing to put burdens on people or businesses. I think it's, I think it's the wrong time to do it. I think even for things like T O T, we're not going to see a huge amount in the next couple of years. Maybe, maybe we're back to some things a hundred percent, but I think hotels are still suffering. Um, I think the timing is bad on it. Um, I don't think twenty-two is the right time to do it. I think additionally, um, we know that there are questions about, if we go to a ballot, what does the F P C allow us to say? And not saying things like that that are uncertain, until that uncertainty is lifted. I think it'd be foolish to, to, to put something on there, so I won't sign up for that. Um, the one on here that does not require is a short-term rentals. Um, short-term rentals are certainly happening. I have one on my street that's been happening for years. I would bet very easily it's rented more than it's not, and these are one or two-day rentals. New cars every day. I know some neighbors are upset by that because they have strangers coming in next door. I think to open up the floodgates to that, it does affect the quality of life, and I don't think those people are going to want it. Um, if our projections are right, and I think they might be high, we add one code enforcement person, if we need that, wipes out almost everything we get. Because in the low end is a hundred twenty-five thousand, take any full-time person with a burden, with a burden of um, overhead. We're going to wipe it out. I, I just don't see that it's that significant, and I don't see, even if it's going on and we do nothing about it except complaint-driven, I don't see why we want to make it worse. So I don't think that's, that's um, appropriate. And I think for the cost of what it would take to enforce it and to monitor it and manage it, we're not going to net very much. So um, at this point, um, I'd love to see more revenue. I don't think the timing's right. I think this is more of a two thousand twenty-four issue. The problem, it was suggested maybe do it in off-year, we've done that with prior measures, they're very expensive. So if we can't piggyback on an existing election, it's probably not worth it at all. I mean, we, we got hit on one that was mul-, you know, not multiples, but much higher than we thought. Um, they're expensive, they're very expensive. So um, at this point, I'm not supportive of moving forward. I think these are good topics to do. I think there are some of the ones, I think are un, the, the inequitable maybe like the parcel taxes, but I'm not going to go through them all, because I'm just not going to support at this time. If I were here, twenty-three, twenty-four, I'd very likely support some of them. But that would be dependent on the economy, COVID, inflation, and there's just too much uncertainty now. Council, Councilmember Givens, it'll come back to you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, two comments. One is, I think the um, using, thinking of, of uh, the short-term rentals as a code enforcement issue, the, the horse is out of the barn, as the phrase goes. That it, they're already out there, they're in the marketplace. What I do not think is, we would actually make money because it isn't an enforcement issue. And, and I say this because I have done a little research, and I think we would benefit, council would benefit from a little more. Sunnyvale um, has had some lessons learned, but their program basically is that um, you register and you pay a fee to register, and that's new, and revenue neutral. And um, Airbnb or B Y, whatever it is, and all those, they actually um, manage all of the paperwork and all of the taxes. So that would be a net income. Um, the enforcement is done through the agencies. Um, I, there's ups and downs and everything, and we don't know all the details. But I do think it would be worth it because we know it exists, and we're going to be getting, we are getting more A D Us. And the more A D Us we have, the more potential there is for um, these short-term rentals. So I think um, it would behoove us to have some information to make a more informed um, decision at this point in time. So I would encourage that. Um, and I'm not sure exactly how impact fees fit into the discussion, but I appreciated that being raised. And I um, appreciate it more tonight than I did a few days ago, because there's new state legislation being proposed that would, we're already limited on impact fees, and there's a potential that will be limited even more. So if we are going to be doing something in that area, um, I think we have to be prepared to do something sooner rather than later, before we're prohibited by state law. So I don't think it would hurt to have a little more information on uh, what we can and can't do right now. I, I'm, I have mixed feelings about them, but I think that they have value to understand better.
I, I support that also, Liz, and that's why I brought up impact fees, is time is of the essence. If these other bills go through and pass, and then we can't do anything. Um, and, and with what we're doing, all these developments are coming forward, there is an impact to those. And I agree about the short-term rentals, you got to offset the enforcement costs. The mayor said, you know, hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's at one employee. So are we really getting a net benefit? But I do want to encourage more enforcement, and it's getting the word out to the community that if you complain, you're not going to, your name isn't going to be given to your neighbor, that you complained that they have a short-term rental.
So, so, hold on, I'll tell you a little bit, once I've had, a question for Director Eastwood, I think. Just because it's raised a couple of times. Um, what is the, what is the guarantee or the promise of anonymity? And it, it's a little, it's a, it's a little concerning of, of, you know, we have that now, it's called next door, where people return in, turn in their neighbors for various minor infractions. They do it there with their name out there, they don't care. What, somebody calls up and does complain, what is the policy?
Sure, wasn't anticipating this discussion, right? But happy to be a resource, and I think our attorney's also pushing his button. Yes, I'll get closer, thank you. So uh, a standard across all jurisdictions in California, including Campbell, is if you uh, complain, uh, your personal information is protected, uh, that cannot be released, uh, exactly for that reason, retaliation. Um, so that I can, uh, more unhappy looking at municipal code and where that's referenced, but that is industry standard in all cities, that uh, that you cannot release uh, the, the person who issued a complaint uh, for fear of that retaliation. But if our attorney has more to add, I'll go ahead and defer to him.
So short of, short of a court order bill, you can't find out who's complaining about you?
Uh, that is the position we've taken. There is a case law along those lines uh, that says that uh, come, people who complain about code violations, their information can be kept private. Um, the only exception in our, in, in prosecuting is if the matter actually goes to court and we have to uh, and, and use the complainant as a witness, then obviously we would have to disclose the identity of that witness to uh, the uh, potential defendant.
Okay, just wondering, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, thanks. Just a, a, a few thoughts to wrap up. I appreciate the discussion. Um, I, I just wanted to explain a bit more of my uh, uh, approach, how I evaluated this. Um, I see this as just being at the very, very start of any discussion of any of these things. So I'm, I'm certainly not sitting here saying, I want to add this and this and this to our residents. I think it's, it's premature to say that one way or the other. So um, I, I guess um, in, in sharing some of the things that I was open to, I, any one of these have potential issues that, that I think would, would or would have needed to be valued more. So just wanted to make clear my, my approach. Um, I, I do see a, a need for this, and, and I, I'm all surprised because at the um, uh, during the party session, we had a lot of discussion around uh, sustainability and fiscal stability. So I, I do think that we, we are facing some of the, the budgetary constraints and, and issues. Um, totally a, a, agree on the different concerns that have been brought up as to the timing. That just makes that cha-, uh, more challenging. Um, but um, i- it's going to um, continue to, 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 to be an issue. So I think that um, at, at some point, we'll, we'll need to consider these. Um, I, I would be based off of the, the discussion o-, more open, I'm probably closest to the Vice Mayor on this. Uh, open to T O T. I, I am concerned, uh, you know, so, so would uh, reevaluate that. I am concerned uh, just about the narrative there, um, and in, in terms of how um, you, you would um, uh, sell that or, or package that. Um, I think it's a challenging narrative, because everyone knows that hotels still, still are seeing issues. Um, a- again, I think probably any one of these would have potential issues, but um, uh, I'm, I'm open to evaluating further, uh, many of them. Um, similarly with short-term rentals, that's, as, as, as has been voiced. Absolutely agree on the need for, for funds for, for housing, and would want to learn from uh, from, from what we're doing there. Again, it just is really challenging for a smaller city to implement these agreements, and you do usually need to pair um, a, a program with, with more enforcement. Um, so i- it would be a little bit challenging to go from uh, almost no enforcement to uh, implementing a program. Doesn't mean that it wouldn't potentially be, be worth evaluating. Um, and, and I do also want to agree with some of the, the concerns that have been raised about consultants, just in overall, you know, weariness that, that I would have. Uh, I don't have a lot of confidence in, in uh, other agencies nearby that, that have done polling. Um, it doesn't really seem to match up with the, the ultimate outcome um, of the election, when, when they've done pulling on parcel taxes or, or these, these kinds of measures. Um, and consultants like to pretend like there's some magic number that you can arrive at, and if you, you go point one percent higher, the public will, will support it, or they won't. Um, that's usually not the case, and so a- anything, if we do it this year or in the future, I'd, is something I'd want to watch out for, and make sure that, that we're stewarding our, our money wisely, but I appreciate the good discussion.
Sounds good. The, just wonder here, do, uh, this is to provide feedback, do we even need a motion to, to, to provide, no bill? Okay, so I think you've gotten the feedback, varied, you know, various feedback, conflicting feedback at times, but feedback.
I think there's some consensus, though.
I did.
I think there is.
Um, so I think the thing that I've heard is there would be some, some, uh, some councils, uh, uh, some councils, uh, uh, board um, to, to look at the uh, T O T, correct, and then act on the, of, for, uh, uh, council, put some. The one thing I guess that I also would, would need to know is, um, would that be a thing to do in the current year? Or, or to, uh, uh, have for it as well. Um, it, 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 it would, um, it would, there are, um, a, there are, again, a number of uh, steps to be, uh, taken. Um, we could either uh, choose to uh, uh, do a polling, or, or, or not. I've also um, heard the uh, councils uh, uncertain step there. But uh, I even have, um, we weren't to do a polling, there are, uh, there, there are, um, uh, steps and, uh, take. So I would want to understand just the timing of that, but also to con-, confirm um, that T O, a T O T adjustment would be, it's, it's a thing that the council would, would like to, of, of pursue.
Any other, any other comments, or?
I, if I may, I think um, the director is asking for a little bit more specific information from us. And um, I, I, we, I don't think we want to get involved into a discussion about polling tonight, but um, polling for me is a big issue.
Well, no, I would say, let me, let me say this, I think, I think what I heard is there are a number of people that are interested in T O T, and perhaps in short-term rentals, and need more information on both.
Yes.
And I think those were the two focus areas. There, there was something wrong with almost everything else for, for at least two or three people. But I would say focus, I mean, I'm not supportive of either now, I'm not against more information. But um, and I think, because I think the timing's off, but I think those were the two that, that were clearly the focus of council. Is that fair? And, and that, that's probably the best feedback we can give you. There'll be, if we move forward, there'll be some discussions on, on polling, I have comments on that as well, but it's premature, I think.
So we'll bring a follow-up item uh, in the future on those two items, just to follow.
I think those are the only two that were on the table, really, as considerations, although I don't, it's clearly not unanimous and, and may, I don't even know if the majority were both, but it's certainly a majority want to discuss it. Okay, thank you. We're, let's take a ten-minute, we've been, we've been at this for, go to know, since six-thirty, so we're masked for three and a half hours. We'll take ten minutes, we'll come back, we only have one item in council committee reports. Thank you. Right? Okay, thank you for indulging us in that. We go to item eleven, discuss reserve strategies. And our presenter again, Finance Director Will Fuentes, you're on again.
All right, so you've forgotten, you've gotten me here again. Um I will try to be brave. Um I think this will probably be a much quicker discussion. But uh let me also just uh share the screen. Give me one second, sorry. Uh all right, so uh again, uh. Uh I will, a council, um we're uh here um to uh uh discuss. Um if there if there is any interest um also from a council to adjust um our our current risers. Um also to do any that were an a a new uh or just in general, a change. Um. It's um it's a it's it's also a continuation of a uh uh of a discussion um that occurred where the uh with the with the with the with the uh the finance sub uh committee um in the end of a J a J a January. Um it's it's also to address a a current war, a current war plan um to to uh tackle uh to tackle fiscal stability and a ra- a right fiscal stability and recovery. Um. Just on this, I'm just the same way that the uh discussion of of new Iraq, the the discussion of new revenue I ideas um was a good uh timing uh now due due to the upcoming of of a budget. Um it's it's also a good a time for a council to potentially uh uh discuss and adjust. Um anything that we do had our uh anything we do with our others. Um there may be other um uh purposes that the council would have to address. Um there also may be a a purposes that a current reserve is meant to address today. Um that you would either want to a change or also a delay. Um so uh uh under the a council report under a attachment aid. Um it gives a a quick and brief uh overview of each of the general, the each of the general fund reserve accounts. Um the um amount uh from the end of end of June of two thousand and twenty-one. Um and then also in attachment A B um is the current reserve of a current reserve of of a reserve of policy um that that does um control and restrict um a couple of the key ones. Um it was um updated um in October of two thousand and uh seventeen. Um but it's it's a good, it's a good idea um to to hey, address them um every a a couple of uh uh every couple of uh uh years. Um in case um that again, there are any of purposes that a change. Um and also if there's any um additional uh purposes um that the council would want to address. Um so in the council report, um there are um a couple of options to uh uh consider. Um there are um the reserve, our um accounts that if the purpose is the same. Um they um could potentially be put together. Um if um again, um there is a um a purpose that um we just, we just, we just don't need. Um we also could delete them that was the reserve account. Um and uh put put that uh towards a a different a purpose as well. Um there there are um a couple of the reserve um a- a- accounts that that we've um a a a discovered um that either the a title or or um the a policy is either unclear or just um a not um uh just not there. Um so it um it could be, it could also be good to adjust um a couple of the uh current ones as well. But also, um if there is any other uh uh purposes that the council would have to address. There 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 is um a currently um a la- a lot um to be a a a addressed for a deferred um deferred maintenance a cost um in just about every uh uh just about every uh low uh occasion that we own. Um so it could be a a it could be an idea for council to uh and consider um to do some a type of a building of a building maintenance. Uh I think uh infra- infra- infrastructure of reserve, reserve account or um its its own um of of fund as well. Um if if there are any um changes uh that were to occur. Um if there are any a new um a reserve um accounts that were put into a place. Um we we also would need to ensure that there's a way to a to fund and either keep them at a certain amount or to be able to get to a a a target. Um so it's um it's again a timely uh to uh discussion because we're uh just going into the, we're just going into the budget uh process. Um but it also uh uh ties to the uh uh discussion that just occurred. So so after that some uh uh time, um I'm going to turn it over to Harret. And um he will, he will on just give a high a level, a high level overview of a couple of our key accounts. Um and then take it through to here.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Um as Director Fuentes has mentioned, I will be going over um a handful of general fund reserves that we have here on this PowerPoint slide. But as you see in attachment A, we have about sixteen general fund reserves. Um and as I go through uh the the seven reserves that we have on the slide, I'll be sure to to mention its purpose. Um any policy that we have, uh how it's funded and its current um balance levels right now. And uh and so the first one is our capital improvement program reserve, better known as C I P R. As you might be aware, this is a reserve that we utilize to fund uh capital and infrastructure projects. Council financial policy states that uh we have a target of about five million dollars for C I P R. And uh to fund it, about one point five million dollars annually. However, its current balance is one point six million dollars. And uh that's one point six million dollars of unallocated um C I P R funds. And uh I I I mentioned the unallocated portion because the next reserve that I'd like to speak about is our capital projects committed reserve. That reserve is a subset of C I P R in that it's it's already committed C I P R funds towards current um and active capital improvement projects. Its balance is uh seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars roughly. And as we incur costs for for active and ongoing projects that are funded by um C I P R, it is that reserve account that um decreases over time. And that might explain why um that reserve decreased about from about one point five million dollars to seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The next reserve that we have is called capital projects, I mean the assigned category. And this reserve is solely for construction tax. It's it's funded by construction tax. And um that reserve is utilized to fund capital projects that are funded by construction tax. So as we receive construction tax revenue, um this reserve increases. And as we incur capital pro- as we incur capital costs um that are funded by construction tax, it decreases. Its current balance at this moment, uh as of June. Its current balance at this moment, as of June thirty, twenty twenty one, is five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The next reserve that we have is the PERS reserve. This is a reserve in which we do not have council policy. This reserve currently sits at a balance of two point two million dollars and it was last funded in fiscal year eighteen, I believe. Per council direction, we placed about one point two million dollars in that reserve. And while there are no council policies at this moment, it is a reserve that can be utilized to pay down pension costs or potentially as a device to stabilize our budget as we see spikes or increases in, in our pension costs. The next reserve that we have is the city council reserve. This is a reserve that was established in fiscal year sixteen with an initial balance of five hundred thousand dollars. So much of the PERS reserve, it does not have a, a council policy at this moment. However, historically, it's a, it's a reserve that's been used to, to fund expenses such as important commission gifts, volunteer recognition. And a few other items that I have here as well. The next reserve that we have is the economic fluctuation reserve. Which has a policy in which it's set to be at sixteen point six seven percent or two months of the general fund operating reserve. For general fund operating expenditures. So per policy, the target balance here is nine million dollars and we currently meet that, that reserve and its balance as of June thirty, twenty twenty one. And last but not least, we have the emergency reserve, which is to be maintained at ten percent of the general fund operating revenue. As you might recall, in fiscal year twenty, we utilized a portion of this reserve due to a shortfall in in general fund revenue due to COVID nineteen. And so that balance right now, as it stands, is two point six million dollars. However, the target balance is five point seven. As Director Funtz has mentioned, staff did go to the finance committee on January twenty first and had a discussion with respect to these reserves. And the subcommittee's feedback included that it would be necessary or suggested that the the reserves funded in the event that we have, say, general fund operating surpluses. Currently within our financial policy, it is not clear in, in the prioritization of the reserves. The next feedback we received from the subcommittee was with regards to the naming of our of two of our capital project reserve accounts and to provide clarification there. Also, as Director Funtz has mentioned, there are a couple of reserves that do not have formal council policy. And that includes the city council reserve and the PERS reserve. And last but not least, the finance subcommittee's feedback suggested that we continue to separate the economic fluctuations reserve and the emergency reserve in two separate accounts. And to close, it is staff's recommendation that the city council discuss the current reserve strategies and provide staff with feedback regarding areas of interest for future consideration. Council may also provide staff direction to consider other reserve modifications. Or to not consider reserve modifications. And last but not least, councilman provides staff with other direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Are there questions for staff?
Yeah. Tell me again, I couldn't quite hear what you said about what is the council, city council reserve. I know we need to clarify it more, but you were saying something was set aside for, I didn't hear what you said.
Sure, that is a reserve that was established in fiscal year sixteen with an initial balance of five hundred thousand dollars. Some of the, the costs that I've seen that were charged to that reserve include or the commissioners appreciation, appreciation gifts, volunteer recognition gifts. And items such as those throughout the last several years. However, we haven't used that balance in the last two years or so.
Does that include going to conferences?
That's not part of your operating budget, no, for conferences.
Pay for us to go to a conference. Okay, thank you.
A council member, Gibbons?
Thanks. I, I, this might be long better in the conversation, a discussion, but I would just offer that your understanding of the council reserve is not correct.
So, so I think what Nora is reflecting is simply the expenditures have been charged to that account. It's not reflecting our policy, but simply how it's been used. What, what isn't, I'm sorry, what isn't correct? Because those are expenditures we charge.
We can talk about it afterwards when we get into discussion.
Okay. Question, for, not all emergencies are fiscal, but if they are fiscal, can the emergency reserve be used for economic fluctuations?
Um, so I can address that. The, the current, the current emergency it, it can be a use, it can be used for either for either fiscal, a fiscal emergency due to the economy. But it, it, it also could be a use of, it could be used in the of say, an earthquake, a hurricane. Types of events as well. The, the purpose of it is a bit abroad. It's, 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 it's also a close to the purpose of the econ of the econ flux reserve as well. But it, it can be used for either of, either of emergency or also a one caused by some, some, some type of
It could have different uses, yeah. Could have different uses, but doesn't have to. And maybe if the economic reserve was drawn down, we might want to use funds from emergency if we had to.
Um, so for COVID, we tapped into the into the into the emergency, into emergency reserve. But it was a, a, a council choice that we also could have tapped into a different one as well.
Okay, thank you. Question?
So just when I was talking with the city manager about this the other day, I came to the conclusion, which I think he agreed with, that some of these reserves are more like, I'm going to call them financial department reserves. So we have the three primary ones, which are the emergency reserve, the economic fluctuation, and the PERS reserve. And I'll set aside the dear council reserve. But the majority of the others are a way of labeling money and setting aside for financial organization. And they just happen to have the word reserve in it.
Yes, some of them are also best practices by the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association.
So, so I would, from my mental understanding, I would say that's all finance structure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions. We'll open up the public for comments. Anybody in the public wishing to speak? Steve Saunders, come on up. Certainly.
In a prior council meeting, I thought it was stated that as long as we had any of the ARC funds sitting around, we couldn't add to our reserves. What part of that did I get wrong?
Thank you. Staff, that's a fair question.
This isn't a discussion of adding to the reserves, it's just a discussion of how we, we categorize our reserves and how we name them. So we're not changing the funding of them necessarily or proposing take ARPA funds to fund these. We're simply talking about is our practices as they exist right now. Clear how we're going to use those funds is our policies to support the use of those funds and the names the funds transfer.
So use and nomenclature. Okay, anybody else from the public? Do you have anybody online? Okay, so let's bring back the council for comments. I would, I would ask, let's start with coming to give it to them. I'd like, let's address this issue of the of the council one that's thrown out there. So city manager, if you could comment on it.
Yeah, so I, I'm going to try and pick your brain as well, Mayor Esnikoff, because this goes back to when we were versed on the council. So it was two thousand sixteen. And I didn't look this up. But I believe this is reasonably close, which is, that was the one year that there was a million dollars in surplus. And the council decided that they would set aside five hundred thousand dollars for the library and police building projects.
So this is boomerang funds?
Yes.
If it's, so if it's the boomerang funds, which is a one-time had to do with redevelopment maybe or something. There was a discussion of Mayor Baker, I think it was spend, spend, we haven't had any money that's spent, Bill might even remember. Let's spend it. Public art, bike racks, I remember. So this is at the time that we were looking at the civic center. And I actually insisted quite adamantly that we take money aside because we're going to need money to fund some of the early work on the, on the library and police station, which included engineering work. And we did spend about a hundred fifty thousand at one point, and that might be why it's in the threes. If this is that money, it's absolutely the reason it went from a thousand dollars or a couple thousand dollars up to that. I don't know that we had anywhere else to put it. There was a lengthy discussion. It was maybe one to four for quite a while.
Probably.
With the, with the understanding, to be honest with you, I would think that if we didn't spend this in so many years, you know, maybe we had better uses for it. But, but basically, I really felt that we're going to have to come up with a couple hundred thousand a minimum to do engineering work and we, and we used it. So that, that is the money.
So, so, so let me just be clear, not to confuse two things, you are correct. There in two thousand sixteen, we, it was before my time, but we did, the council did create a fund for civic center, the master plan. That money was used for some of those purposes, whatever was unspent, did get returned back to, to, to the general fund, but there is a separate city council reserve.
It was a million dollars in boomerang funds.
But
And we split it fifty fifty.
Fifty fifty, five hundred thousand for city council reserve.
This is that money, but there was no, there was half a million dollars, half a million dollars put. Put into specific to hold it for civic centers, that we didn't have a civic center reserve. I argued that one.
So that money was spent out of that and whatever was left was returned, but there still remains a city council reserve that has the, the remainder of those expenditures every year when we've done a budget. When we show expenditures, particularly in the council, in the county, city council budget, we show those revenue sources and support for those, for those areas, in those areas that Nora mentioned now. That may not be where the policy ends up and how we want to spend it.
I don't, Nora's not wrong. I mean, you're absolutely right. We've taken it for, for commissioner gifts, volunteer gifts.
Actually, I don't think we did.
And all that, so, so, but there is a history there. Thank you, Director Perso, remember that well.
Your explanation is not that you weren't saying what you found, but that is not where it came from and how it was to be used.
Thank you, I get to relive my victory.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, again, as, as I think we've said, in fairness to Nora Reed, it's, there's that, that is actually how it has been used in the past. Now, this may be where your, your comments were getting to. It also came up during the discussion that we had on the finance subcommittee and Vice Mayor, feel free to weigh in. The impression that I understood was that some of those funds had been used for those kind of proclamation gifts. But in recent years, that had not been the practice and that came out of other funds. I don't know if it was general funds. You, you might want to weigh in on that. And that's where the need to clarify the policy came up, just so we can get it straight, one way or the other, where it's supposed to be coming from.
That's fair. I, I would just say, I totally agree. The finance, so you do a good job. The issues you raise are great. And this is indicative of what, of why, how you're right.
Why we're talking. I apologize, you just caught me off guard when you said what you said, so I apologize. The, the issue is, and I think why it changed, because it wasn't supposed to be used for gifts and all of that. That was, and I think we found that out a couple of years ago, and that's why it switched. It was supposed to be used for what you were just speaking to. It was bicycle racks and other kinds of things.
And we did with the other.
We did, we did, but we didn't spend it all. And now I totally agree that this is the right time to have a discussion on how it should be used and what, what should happen to it, absolutely.
Just as the subcommittee, other comments?
So, yeah, I, I was surprised when this discussion came up at the subcommittee meeting because I was astounded that we would be using reserve money to fund gifts for commissioners and that type of thing prior to two thousand sixteen. But those funds were always programmed out of the operating budget for a certain amount for each, for the advisory commission dinner, for the volunteer luncheon. And all of those operating, or all of those expenses came out of line items out of the general fund, not out of a reserve.
And I'll just add that I think it, it did also come up in the discussion that some of the funds had been used for what I'll all term kind of community grants. And, and that may be, I'm, I'm just using that shorthand to refer to the kind of bicycle, bicycle rack, the, the, the so that, that had been used in the past, but I, I, like Councilor Bybee, I had no idea that this that, that this fund was there for any kind of future usage. And so I, I, again, that's where I think the need to clarify and return it, hopefully to its original and intended purpose would come from.
So, so I just declare, I, I'm very pleased with the discussion. I'm so delighted that you had a this pre discussion at the finance committee because I think that's where it belonged and the recommendations you've come up with make a lot of sense to me and we'll talk more about it. But in terms of questions and understanding right now, that's where we're at. So, thank you.
But this councilwoman, you haven't joined us yet.
I'm amazed we have a half a million dollars sitting there. Nobody seems to know what it was for, so I'm glad you can clarify, Paul, what it was for. No, I was just going to go down the list now and make comments regarding the
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we did. Steve spoke. Okay, so I'm on page three of four of the discussion reserve strategies. Priority reserves should be clarified. Absolutely. That's what we're doing here right now. Renaming of some reserves. I, I support the capital project being divided up between allocated capital project improvement reserve and unallocated capital project improvements. And then the construction tax capital projects. I think those make very clear sense now. Because I've been confused in the past which funds are which. So we talked about the council reserve. And I'm surprised there's not a clearer policy already on the PERS reserve. I could have sworn there was more of a policy on that. I agree with continuing to separate the economic fluctuations and the emergency reserves. But I'm going to follow up on our conversation last Thursday. But I'm gonna follow up on our conversation last Thursday. I think we put it under the cat, category of sustainability. But we're gonna need a roof at the community center and so many, we're gonna need a roof at the community center in so many years. We're not banking the money now for these capital proj- I, I don't know if that falls under these capital budgets, but I would like to see a line item, something like long-term infrastructure. Long-term ma- I don't know what to call it. The subcommittee can come up with a name. But we're setting aside money now for the roof we're gonna need in 10 years. And that's in a separate pot of money. It's not a current capital project. It's not allocated or unallocated. It's separately, totally set aside for our long-term maintenance and upgrades to our buildings.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez, comments?
Sure, I'll just, I'll say broadly speaking, probably not surprising, but in agreement with the subcommittee discussion and recommendations.
It's always a given.
At, at this point, I, I don't necessarily see the need of either adding or deleting or consolidating reserves at, at this point. I, I think, I, I may be persuaded otherwise, because certainly I, I agree with the, the goal. I of want to be prepared for, for those kind of projects. I, I think it may be able to be done under the existing categories that, that we have. But I, you know, I await staff input on that, and if there's a strong sentiment, otherwise, that, that we do need to create something. You had open to, to that. But currently, I, I think the, the number of, of funds that, that we have is probably fine with me.
Councilmember Gibbons, other comments?
Just to be brief, my, my initial comment was, I'm understanding that we have three primary policy-driven reserves, the economic, the emergency, and the PERS. Those are the, the core three. I'll set this, the city council one aside for just a moment. The rest of them, I, I really think are, should be finance policy-driven, not council-driven. Renaming them, structuring them, the percentage of money that goes in them. I really think, from my level of understanding, others here, no more. I think there, they should be what is the best practice, as you said. What should be the best practice for a finance department. I'm fine keeping our three separate. And I think we could have a follow-on discussion of what the council reserve could be. And it could be it, it could be the beginning of a maintenance thing. I don't disagree that that's not needed. I think we have to be careful. The community, the theater itself does have its own. Because the theater has money coming in with every ticket sales. It has to have this reserve for that, and that is used for that building. So, I don't want to mingle that. I don't think, again, it's, it's more finance best practices. If we need another fund for maintenance, separate from infrastructure and maintenance, to me, are two different things. But we know the pool, for example, other things. I, I think that that might become a third policy reserve. A fourth, sorry. It'll be economic, emergency PERS. And then fiscal, fiscal plant, fiscal plant, utilities, fiscal plant, fiscal, fiscal, fiscal plant, something like that. I would be amenable to that, depending on how other council members feel. And then I think we could have a conversation about the, what is left in the council reserve and how it could be used, or how it should be reallocated. I'm very open to whatever that discussion is.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
So, if I could ask finance staff, what is your understanding of the PERS reserve and, and its use? Have, have we ever utilized or expended any of those funds?
Um, so, to date, we are yet to ex, 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 expand expend the PERS resident account. We do, um, we, we do also in, intend to return to a council again with some, some, some potential, some potential ways that we could address our, our PERS, our, our cost, our UAL. And the PERS, the, the existing PERS reserve account could certainly come into a play for anything that we would want to do to address either our, our current PERS cost per, per year. But, but also our, our PERS UAL as well. But there's, there's not done a, a currently a policy in place. The, a, a, a council just chose to put them outside a certain amount for the abroad of, of the purpose of, of, of PERS and a writ, a writ, a retirement, a cost.
And I'll just come back, I think I'm supportive of, of pretty much what the finance subcommittee said, as far as understanding what these are and prioritizing. And renaming if it's not obvious, and we obviously have to do some, and so a couple, at least council, maybe PERS, and understand exactly what it's for and why we have it. And that may spur us to make changes in the numbers. I don't think moving things around now makes sense, but let's, let's get a handle on it. But, um, thank you.
May I? I would just offer, I think it was in 2017, council had a fairly detailed discussion of PERS and the funding and the money. Because I have always had this question in my mind, and I know it comes from that time, was I, I didn't because the, we keep owing PERS money and we have to pay, pay it down, I kept saying, why are we keeping this money here? It's not earning anything. It's not doing anything. Why don't we pay it down and save ourselves the seven percent, whatever, whatever? And I, that, I would think that would be a great conversation to have. Why are we holding that money there when it could be of more value in another manner? So, I would love to have that conversation now.
Well, we're planning to bring back a discussion more specifically on that issue. So, so we will return with the, with that.
Any other comments?
So, so The comment about a, what did you call it? Project, what was the word? Physical plant? Of, if you can have something, whether that's in the CIP, CIPR. But I really would like to see money set aside for like roof repair, building repair. I mean, Rich talked about this all the time, of this long-term commitments. And I don't know that it does fit in the capital projects, because you go from allocated, which is a current project to unallocated, which would be your, you know, your banking to build a new park or something. So, physical plan, I don't know if that's what you want to call it, but have a reserve for build out.
Is that the feedback you needed, or we don't have a motion here, I don't think, because it's a feedback, it's provide feedback?
Sure. Just to comment briefly on, on that item, I would support maybe a further discussion at a future date on that. I, I, I will, you know, I, I don't feel, I, we have enough information now, or, or for myself. I will note that the capital improvement reserve is, is short of a five million dollar target. And perhaps if we're meeting the target, then that would be an appropriate place. But I think there's a further strategic discussion to be had there.
I agree.
But you're gonna bring this back. Is that, let me ask you, is that sufficient feedback from the council?
I, I think so, and I think some of these discussions will lead to our budget discussions, that we talk about budget and funding. We'll certainly follow up on some of these, and we'll follow up on the discussion with curves and some of those other things as well.
Thank you. Good job with the subcommittee. Appreciate that. We got unfinished business. There is none, so we go to committee reports. I'll start to my left.
Well, I went from going to nothing for three or four weeks to having something every day. I participated in the state of the valley. I think it was two weeks ago on a Saturday. Very informative of what's going on around us. I attended the early settlers' lunch. Very well presented by Carrie. Anna Schu invited Wes and I to go see the Section Eight housing on Rincon. That was very informative. It's beautiful building. I'd never been in there. We met with some of the residents, talking about how wonderful it is for them to have the lower rent. The county library district JPA, we had our meeting for that. I was on this recycling and waste reduction commission. And basically, that was to allocate additional funds for SB 1383 for the food composting. And one thing that's not actually a committee, but I would like to acknowledge, the Country Women's Club yesterday had the anniversary of 117 years being the Country Women's Club. So, that was nice. For Campbell, for Campbell.
Councilmember Lopez?
Um, I'm, I'm in the nothing phase right now, and I have a couple more. I did attend a training for VTA chairs. Extremely informative, good discussion, and unfortunately, a lot of discussion of safety and, and, you know, with some of the, the threats and issues that, that we're facing, but very informative.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gibbons?
Thank you. State of the Valley, Early Settlers, and Anna, as Councilwoman Landry has said. We also had our legislative subcommittee meeting, which Councilmember Lopez might want to say a little bit more about. I'll just offer that there's a lot of bills coming at us yet again. And what a couple of, of the humdingers are, that they're looking at ways to expedite permitting the actual review and permitting time. You know, talking 30 days, 60 days. And I, you know, how do you get a plan check and permitting done in 30 or 60 days? There's all kinds, and Silicon Valley Clean Energy, sorry, Silicon Valley Leadership Group has put together yet another mandatory exp- exp- expediting, expediting of buildings, residential projects of 25 units or less has to be done in so many days. It's this tremendous transition now to, I'm gonna say procedural time, timeframes. So, there's a lot that the legislative committee is going to be reviewing and setting up. That Councilmember Lopez can talk more about later. I wanted to just go over Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And just, I think I mentioned last time that the rates were going to be going up on March 1st, which they have done. We are still less than PG&E, but people need to, I'm sure they're gonna know. Like everything we've talked about, the electric rates are rising 18 and a half percent. And that has a lot to do with PG&E. I mean, it's as simple as that. Gas prices are increasing 22%. That is the international situation, among other things. But it drives electrical costs at this point as well. So, it's, it's, it's a lot. Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors took some significant action on behalf of our customers. The board set aside $3 million for relief for our FARA and CARES. What's the right word? Customers. We did that early on in the pandemic. And this time, they're going to be giving about a monthly, for eight months. They'll give a monthly credit for all CARE and FARA customers. And then they also set aside $17 million to double down on our environmental decarbonization programs. We all know that the reports are becoming more and more dire. There was another one out, either this morning or yesterday morning, on how significant it all is. And just to be aware that Silicon Valley Clean Energy has saved their customers in Santa Clara Valley, our work area $77 million on their electric bills over PG&E. And I don't have the number here and how much we've saved on, on carbon. But lot, lot happening in the energy sector and trying to help people keep control of their finances in this inflationary period. It's just a toughie.
Thank you.
I can just kind of briefly, that's not nothing. Thanks for reminding me. No, it's important. I'll just add to the legislative subcommittee discussion that one of the things we really focused on was how to be strategic and take lessons learned going forward so that we can better anticipate the pulse of the legislative calendar and learn from our own representatives as well. So, we set up some good practices for that going forward.
I apologize. I don't know.
No problem. You're back.
I attended a closed session of the Cities Association last week and also the Early Settlers event last week. And thank Carrie for her great presentation. She did an excellent job. And the mayor also did a nice job of welcoming, welcoming everybody to the event.
Thank you. And I think, I think it was in the last two weeks you mentioned, PD had their event. PD had their annual honorees for promotions and a new officer. So, it was a nice event, and it's good to see people joining and people moving up. And it's all, all new faces. It's amazing. Early settlers, obviously, as you've mentioned here, I had the mayors and managers meeting with the city manager. It was amazing how far ahead we are versus other cities that are, that were not, we're still not meeting in person. Would not do so in masks. And one of the facts, would not come back if they had to be on Zoom and wanted to stay, you know, has to go back to where it was. And, 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 you know, my point was, that ship has sailed. Like, Pete, we've always talked about people dialing in remotely and calling in remotely, and it couldn't be done. Well, now it's been done, it'll stay. So, we were way ahead of cities that said, but they can't, they just can't do what we're doing, which is show up, and they can't run a hybrid meeting. They didn't have the technology to do it. They didn't understand how we did this. It was just kind of eye-opening. And I think of the five cities, the other, was it all four, we're, we're still, we're still remote. So, it's amazing. That apparently will change for some, at least with, with the masks going away. And then the other thing we all attended, obviously, was a priority session. So, that, how soon we forget. So, that's our report. Appreciate it. We're gonna adjourn to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be hopefully unmasked, I believe, Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. hopefully unmasked, I believe, Tuesday, March 15th, 2022.